Point, I will go through all of the standard reading of the paperwork.
So what I did.
Yep.
Is I prepared a memo again. Peter, you got a copy of my memo in the packet, right? Okay. So what I tried to do to help us move things along. I put the policies that were left to discuss. What I would like to do is take care of some of the ones that might be easier.
Yep.
Instead of jumping into the more difficult ones. So I want to skip over the town manager policy. And I want to go right to the anti-harassment, formal anti-harassment policy. Becky worked with Peter Berry. And there were two policies that we broke the anti-harassment policy down into. One would be the standard of conduct policy. And the other would be the anti-discrimination, equal employment opportunity policy. I've attached both those policies to the memo for your review. I know Becky has reviewed them as well, but I'm very comfortable with the two policies. I think they make perfect sense. I think Peter did a good job and Becky did a good job breaking them out into the two different areas. And I would recommend to the select board that you adopt both the standards of conduct policy and the anti-discrimination, equal employment policy. Those are my recommendations to the board if you want to get those off the table right away.
Questions, discussion?
Just occur to me to check. They did get, the second one got a number that fits, right?
Yes, I did that. I made sure they all lined up correctly.
Okay, and Peter, you and I had spoken today was early. Did you make a change?
Well, it was in the, you pointed out. If you look at.
Which policy?
Policy. Well, first look at the standards of conduct policy under, I've got page three of five, under row number four, procedures.
Page three is six, I have.
Yep, I assume that's changed.
The page, I spread out the pages different. So you're looking at procedures. It's on page four. Section four, procedures, you have complaints and investigation?
Yes.
Yes.
So under complaints, the policy now says that the HR director, when a complaint come in, contacts town council's office to discuss the complaints. They have make a determination between the two of whether a formal investigation is required. If it's a minor incident that the person who's complained about is brought to that person's attention, they say that they're not, they're going to correct the behavior, that happens. That could be resolved informally. I put in this sentence, if an informal investigation is appropriate, the HR director will investigate and attempt to resolve the complaint. If it's formal, town council uses a professional investigator. So that sentence, if you look at the anti-discrimination, equal opportunity employment, that sentence that says if an informal investigation is appropriate, the HR director will investigate and attempt to resolve the complaint, was left out of the same procedures complaint section of the anti-discrimination policy.
Which is on which page?
It's on page five or nine in the anti-discrimination policy.
So we would just suggest adding that to make clear that if it's informal, the HR director can resolve it, maybe discussing with town council as they go along. It just gets resolved by the HR director without retaining.
But who did determine, who makes the determination if an informal investigation is appropriate?
Says in the previous sentence. She'll talk, the HR director will talk with town council, they'll decide together.
Okay. I think that makes sense, that's a good way to handle it.
Okay, I see that, thank you.
Is that the only changes?
Yes. That's the only change I, right.
Can you talk a little bit, Peter? So both of these, I think, reference the time we use a professional investigator retained by town council. If it's, if it's a more formal investigation, obviously. What is that process and what is that timeframe? If, you know, if council and the HR director determine, okay, this is a more formal investigation. Do you guys have someone in house that you use? Do you have folks who can just speak to that?
We have retained a guy named Jerry Hayes, former human resources director for forty years for the town Brookline, has done investigations for us in the past. One of the things about working through town council is it protects the, protects the investigation to a certain extent under attorney work product theories. But, you know, it depends, I think, on how complicated the situation is. It can be quick, quick. We like to get it done as quickly as possible, but it's, it involves interviewing a whole number of people. It might take a little bit longer, but generally they don't drag on. You conduct the investigation, the investigator provides a report and makes a recommendation about how to resolve it. And then it would be up to either, I guess, the town manager to implement the action that's recommended or if it's under the board's jurisdiction, then it would be up to you.
Well, let me, let me ask, I'm going to change my recommendation here for a second. Why is the town manager left out of any procedure here? Now, the town manager, the appointing authority, the town manager is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the town. Why did we exclude the town manager from participating in a decision whether or not an investigation is formal or informal? Seems to me the town manager should be involved with that, unless, of course, it's against the town manager. That's a whole different issue.
Yeah.
But why is the town manager left out of this? When we had a complaint in the department last year, two years ago, that complaint came to me. I conducted the investigation. I worked with town council and the HR director to make sure that we did things by the book. Now it looks like we're just taking the town manager completely out of what has worked in the past. And I'd like to know why.
No, I didn't change that. That language is out of the original policy I had. Doesn't prohibit the town manager from getting involved, I guess. I mean, if you want.
You think the town manager should be involved?
Yeah, I mean, if the board thinks that's appropriate to put into the policy, it makes sense.
It makes sense as long as Mark referenced, the complaint isn't against the town manager.
Right. So.
Or another, well, let's see. I mean, these are two different policies. You know, the equal employment opportunity policy doesn't apply to, under the law, to, say, board members. If a complaint came against a board member, you might want to investigate that yourself and, you know, try to resolve that yourself.
So Peter, on the standards of conduct one, I think where this comes into play and perhaps, perhaps the first step should be the HR director contacting town council's office. And if together they decide it is appropriate, then of course the town manager should be involved.
I think you should do the opposite way. I think the first point of contact, unless it's against the town manager, the HR director.
So that's what, that's what I'm trying to work around.
Yeah, I think the town, the complaint, if a complaint comes in, the HR director should discuss it with the town manager and then, then town council. Unless it's against the town manager, then the HR director should go directly to the town council. I think we can put wording in here for that purpose, but it should come to the town manager first. I think.
So I'm not necessarily sure I'm following. So a complaint would come to the HR director who would then loop in the town manager?
Correct, that's how we handled it in the past. That's how we've handled it in the past.
I would say if it's a town employee, it goes to town manager.
Yep.
What if it's a board member? If it's a board member, I think it comes to the select board. I mean, I think it goes first.
Goes to the town council, right?
To town council.
I agree with you.
So if it's a paid employee?
We just need to make that little distinction.
It's a paid employee, it goes to the HR director who then loops in the town manager along with town council.
Along with town council?
Correct.
And unless it's about the town.
Unless it's about the town manager, that language has to be inserted. And if it's about a unpaid board or committee member, then it would go to the appointing authority.
In some cases, that would, well, we change that by law.
Which would be basically town council and the HR director. That's who we would want reporting to us, right?
Why wouldn't you want the town manager reporting to you? I work for you.
Well, if it's against a board member, though.
What if it's against somebody on historic district commission? Why wouldn't you include the town manager in that? I mean, we try and exclude the town manager from day-to-day stuff. I mean, if it's against a selectman, that's different. That should go right to town council and town council should work with the chair of the board unless it's against the chair of the board.
So does, can we add one sentence that says if the complaint is about either the town manager or a member of the board?
Of the select board.
The select board, right. So we could say the HR director shall contact the town manager and town council's office to discuss any complaints filed unless the complaint is about the town manager or a member of the select board, in which case the town manager will not be part of the conversation.
Well, I think that's self-explanatory, I don't think it needs to specifically state that.
Do we want to put in instead of the town manager won't be part of that, that the chair of the select board will?
Correct.
Be part of that call?
Correct.
Just so that it's clear. Unless, of course, yet again, if it's the chair, then it's.
And then it falls to the vice chair. And if it's, if it's about the chair and the vice chair, it falls to the clerk. And if it's about the whole board, well.
Then it's probably happening in the Herald anyway.
Okay.
So now we identifying that if it's a town employee, it goes to the HR.
If it's somebody under the jurisdiction of the town manager, the town manager gets contact. If it's somebody under the jurisdiction of the board, it goes to the select board of the.
Or, or.
I think only if it's someone on the select board.
Or their appointees.
Non-compensated.
How about that? Were there appointees?
It would still go to the town manager.
Yes.
It goes to the town manager.
It might involve the board. You know, for example, there was a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months ago, I received a complaint against a member of a board. I think I looped you guys all in on this one. And I dealt with it. And we handled it. So, I mean, that's, that works. Let the town manager be the town manager. Not every complaint, I know this is shocking, not every complaint is against the town manager. I know that's, I know that's a shock, but.
All right. So Mark and Peter, do you guys feel like you have a good understanding?
One hundred percent.
We're going to see this one again in a few times.
So that one will come back to us, but we can move on to the next.
Geez, I thought that was the easy one too, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So these two are yet to be.
Yep, they'll come back to us in the final language.
Okay.
Well, that's this one.
Well, but they mirror each other, the.
Right, they do.
The two paragraphs are similar in the same way.
Yeah, they're.
Peter, you send me updated language and I'll get that off to the board. I'll put that on your next agenda. The next policy is the investigations policy. Town council had reviewed this, had made comments, and we updated the charge to, to update it.
What pages?
It starts on page twenty-one of your packet.
So when, I don't know that I've seen one that actually has been revised.
This, this policy was one of the original policies that we had. And town council had given me comments, I worked with Allison. We updated it to reflect town council's comments. And we put it in the packet and then the board, for whatever reason, did not take it up that day.
We never have seen this.
I think the only.
You have seen this.
I think the only change I recommended was this third paragraph.
Yeah, that's.
Investigations, oh, the fourth, yeah, the third paragraph. Policy, well, it needs to be changed also because we changed the other policies. But this policy shall not apply to harassment or discrimination complaints filed against town employees or other persons, I guess. I, I, we need to change that to reflect that there are now two policies.
Oh, okay, yes.
You know, the standard of conduct. But basically, this, the reason that I put that in there was because this comes out of, out of the charter. I mean, these, the results of these investigations are placed on file in the office of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town library. And reports summarizing the results of the investigation shall be printed in the next annual town report. So a lot, you know, those complaints are supposed to be kept confidential under the standards of conduct and anti-discrimination policy. So to make them public like that is not appropriate. This, the statute and this policy really pertain, in my view, more for larger kinds of town operations rather than individual complaints of discrimination or, you know, standards of conduct violations.
So Peter, the third paragraph needs to be amended to read that this policy shall not apply to harassment and discrimination complaints, those shall be pursuant to the two new policies that we'll adopt soon, which is this conduct, standards of conduct, and the anti-discrimination, equal employment policy.
I also had some other suggestions on this one. What I mean, Mark, is I don't think we've ever actually discussed this in any detail.
Oh, maybe, maybe you didn't, but.
And so, starting with paragraph one, where it refers to the board of selectmen, we need to change that to select board. Right at the beginning, the opening paragraph, pursuant.
I got it.
The one in here does have select board, doesn't it?
No, there's one, I missed it in one section.
The first sentence, and then in the fourth sentence, it says board of selectmen.
Yeah, I missed it in one section.
Under number one, if a member or members of the board are presented with a request, I wanted to say, I suggested that we say a request by the complainant. There was a situation a few years ago where there was a request and it was not ever clear who actually made the request and, you know, a whole lot of stuff unfolded. And as the person who was involved in that, not knowing who was presenting the complaint was kind of a problem and kind of, I think, not fair.
Are you suggesting that the person who files the complaint's information be made public?
No, I'm requesting that I, that we just insert wording there that said, if a member of the board is presented with a request by the complainant, it can't be like a secondary person who's complaining about something.
I think that's a good addition.
Okay. With the request by the complainant?
Yes.
Yeah, basically that no anonymous or third-party complaint will be.
And then it was hard to kind of figure out how this would actually play out. But paragraph number two, down there towards the, in the last sentence, it says, "In the event the chair and town manager disagree at this step, the request shall be presented to the full board for review." Can that be held in executive session? Is there, would executive session be legal for something like that?
I'm sorry.
It's a complaint against a public body, it's going to be notified.
The last sentence of section two, where it's talking about if the town manager and the chair of the board disagree about how to proceed, that they're going to bring it to a discussion with the whole board. Does that have to be an open session?
It would depend on what the investigation is about. If it's about complaints that involve possible discipline, that would be an executive session.
So if somebody accuses an employee of embezzling money and we want to do an investigation?
That's right.
That would have to be an executive session?
That would.
Okay. If somebody wants us to investigate whether or not a board member is not attending various meetings and they should be removed from the board?
Right.
That would not be.
That's a securability issue.
Correct.
That's got to be held in open session.
Yeah. So it depends, Becky, you raised a very good point. It depends on the particular issue. So I don't think you really, I don't know how you would address that.
Case-by-case basis, to town council. You could put that language to that effect in there, that each complaint will be handled on a case-by-case basis and held either an open session or executive session as determined by town council. Could you say that?
You could. If you look at paragraph three, it mentions executive session.
Oh, it says it right there.
That's going into, you know, a situation that's.
It already says it, Josh.
Okay.
It's like you read the policy and I did read your ones.
Right, okay.
What else?
Well, it says shall be determined on a case-by-case basis.
That's what Josh was saying.
But it doesn't suggest that town council will be a part of the discussion.
That's call of the board.
Well, this issue of whether it qualifies for.
Why don't we just say, why don't we add the words after, on a case-by-case basis, "in consultation with town council"?
As required.
As required.
Okay.
Is that all right?
It's like we're getting paid by the word.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on this one?
If I can just, Allison, just make sure I get all the changes before you adopt it, because I think you can adopt this. On the first page, the third paragraph down, this policy shall not apply to harassment, discrimination complaints. Such complaints shall be filed pursuant, and I'll put in the two new policy names and titles.
Yep.
I'm going to add the words under paragraph one, item number one, after the words with a request, add the words by the complaint. And then on paragraph three, section three, case-by-case basis, comment, "in consultation with town council as required." I'd ask the board to adopt that policy as presented.
So, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Do you have something else, Becky? All in favor?
Aye.
I just, I do have a question. Mark, after we've approved these, where can we find them? Or are you going to give us, are you going to give us a thumb drive with all of the approved ones?
Actually, well, if you want that, I can absolutely do that. But John Geiger and I talked to Mike Bouchard, town clerk, to find out the best way to do this. And we reached out to ECO, General Code Publishers. They are going to put a section on the, on our bylaw regulation and they're going to add all of these policies to that section. We can do both. I can give you a thumb drive and you can have it there as well.
Great, thanks.
Whatever you want, but I think it's a great.
I personally would like the thumb drives once we're all done with them.
Yep, absolutely would be that.
Thumb drives only good until you amend any of the one policies that are on the thumb drive. Just pointing that out.
I know, but at least there will be.
What's the next one, Mark?
So the next policy is the liaison policy. And what John Geiger had recommended is that all appointed and elected boards and committees would be, we would have liaisons. And so I amended this to refer to only elected boards.
Only elected, right.
Only elected, and then I listed the elected boards on the policy. And I think this is what John had recommended and I think it's a great idea. Nothing prohibits any member of this board from reaching out to any department whenever they want to reach out. So I think having liaisons to elected boards makes sense. So this is the policy recommendation.
I see this as how the select board helps keep the orchestra in some degree of commonality in terms of direction. By having to these other elected boards.
I agree. The only thing that jumped out at me when I looked at this list was, given other items on our agenda today, was the community preservation committee, which is not elected. And I've been the liaison to them, I think, ever since I got elected. And they, and keeping in touch with them has been important, I think, during, especially during the budgeting and when they're approving their.
I thought the CPC act there was selectman, no?
We're going to get.
We're going to get to that.
Or a designee, but yes.
But I, so I, I, but then I, you know, I think a case can be made for a lot of other appointed committees. I guess what I thought is maybe we should make it clear that whoever we appoint to CPC, we wish to have them keeping us informed about what's happening. I didn't have a good solution to it. I just, that jumped out to me as one that it might be beneficial to continue having a liaison to.
If you put, if you put that one on, you could list one of, or three of fifty others.
Right, that's what I thought.
I think it's needest, to me, it's cleanest to just have it be these elected folks. And the reality is, you know, we will have a designee on the CPC and we can request anybody committed any point.
Can I suggest you add the town moderator to this list?
Well, John and I talked about that. We took the moderator and the town clerk off it.
Who are individuals.
Yeah, but you could have a liaison to them.
I guess you could.
We could, I don't think we need one.
Yeah, I don't.
John and I talked about that.
I think that they both are able to just contact us if they need something. And if one of us has a question, we can contact them.
All right. So does someone want to make a motion to approve this?
I move that we approve the liaison policy due December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Set.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the next one is the meetings on holiday policy. I think Allison said you were going to reach out.
I have reached out, I have not heard back a definitive list.
So you need to bring this one back?
I think either way, we can either approve it as it is and add a list at some later date or we can leave it open, either way.
I think, I think you can approve it as presented.
The way, the way it was written when we first saw it, you mean?
Yeah, waiters now.
I gave you a copy in your, in your packet.
Page twenty-five.
So everybody's comfortable with not being clear about which religious holidays?
Ultimately, we would get that list and put it in here. The question is, in the interim, do we want to, I mean, I guess it doesn't really matter. We either have no policy, we have the old policy, or we.
Can you put a section C on this and say, list of holidays and to be filled in later? Just put that in there and then we can approve it. And once it's there, we can bring it back for revision inserting those holidays in. And that way we can approve it? Is that okay?
I think that's fine.
Okay, now, you realize that you have, you defined this differently in another section.
What do you mean?
What section?
If you go to the select board operational policies and procedures.
We got rid of that.
We haven't gotten rid of that.
Well, you got it tonight.
I don't think we're going to tonight, sorry. The select board policy and, all right, the select board operational policy in sections, regular board meetings, special meetings, and working meetings says, "The board shall respect members' religious affiliation in scheduling board meetings." This policy says it is the policy of the select board that no town board or committee shall hold regularly scheduled meetings on any recognized or declared state, federal, local holiday. Holidays including religious holidays, except under emergency circumstances. So this says, if there's a, this says if there's a board member involved, then you're not going to have the meeting.
Yeah.
So it doesn't make any difference what particular religion, if the member says, "I am Greek Orthodox and I have a religious event tonight, we don't have a meeting." This other one is much broader and I don't know how you, how you compensate them or combine them, but it is a different statement. And then I know I had suggested that when we talk about, except under emergency situations, it needs to make reference to as defined in the open meeting law. Because it's very specific in there about what an emergency looks like. And it isn't because somebody, it isn't because somebody got up late.
Well, so John, I was assuming that we were going to eliminate that previous policy under the whole, that compilation thing.
That was my recommendation.
You are correct that this is broader. And I guess the problem I see between having a policy that just says, well, we'll respect the members' wishes is that if there's, happens to be nobody on the board who has an objection to a meeting on, you know, Christmas Day, but the bulk of the public isn't going to be wanting to watch, I don't know. It just seems like we should do, it shouldn't be that idiosyncratic as to who's on the board.
I'm just concerned that if we leave it kind of wide open, we're going to have a situation where we can't predict.
That's true.
Whether we can meet or not meet. And we get here at seven o'clock and someone comes in and says, you know, this is a Hindu holiday. You shouldn't be meeting.
So do folks want to just table this until we hear back from the interfaith council with the list of holidays to include?
That might be smart.
That's fine.
And we just, and we end up with a specific list of holidays that we will not meet.
But that would address the item C, which would be left open on this policy, but doesn't address what John just read.
Right.
Right, which I think will address when we get to discussion of that.
It needs to be reconciled. And I think it should be collapsed down into one policy.
Right, so I think once we, if this is what our intent is, that once we get to the operational policies and procedures, we will discuss it at that point.
And this, this is, this was included in the October seventeenth document that I shared with all of you, where I went through every single one and gave you my thoughts on it. What is it new? where I went through every single one and gave you my thoughts on it, so what is it new?
Okay, I'll bring back the meetings on holiday policy. The next one, I wanna thank town council, I hope the board agrees.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Are you gonna put a C?
No, I'm bringing the whole thing back.
We're not gonna do anything with it right now, we'll bring it back.
I was told to bring it back.
It might be a C, but it's not a C yet.
Okay.
Correct, we'll bring it back, onward.
So the next policy is the social media policy, and I wanna thank town council because Peter shared with me the Town of Acton's social media policy, and I know Josh, you've had a lot of concerns with the length and all the stuff.
This is so much better.
It's awesome.
This is so much better than what it was before.
I think it's a great policy.
I read it twice, and I'm, I'm good with this.
Yep, I think it's a great policy, so I would ask the Select Board to adopt the social media policy as presented.
I got a couple questions.
All right, Becky, go for it.
So, the last page makes a, and I don't know what page this was, be in our policy?
Page five?
Page.
The receipt where it's signed, or the page of FOIA?
Not the signing page.
Page thirty.
Yeah, page thirty. Number three. This refers, I assume this is the policy that came from another town, and it refers to the acceptable use of technology policy. We don't have that.
Oh, we don't?
We have the electronic communications and computer usage policy, I believe.
So I should change the name?
Yep. The other point I just noticed is, this policy as proposed, the one's on the screen, refers only to use of town social media sites. I think that the lengthy draft that had been prepared by somebody, I don't know who, and we never actually, we got it, but we never actually discussed it last winter, also referred to individuals' uses of individuals' social media, and I think maybe that gets into First Amendment rights, which is a little tricky. However, my recollection is that we did have an issue a few years ago with an employee posting things on his own Facebook site that were inappropriate.
That's when you have to get into either the harassment or the
Stupid code of conduct.
Or the code of conduct.
Right, yeah.
So, that I would believe is when you could bring that up.
Okay, so I just wanted to.
I think it's a good point.
Be clear that this is only covering the use of town social media sites, and the electronic communication policy is only covering the use of town electronic equipment. So, something bad, with something inappropriate that happens on a person's private social media account and, which is public, and somebody else sees it, that does fall under the other, the standards of conduct.
If somebody wants to file a complaint about what an individual posts on their own social media site outside of the usage of town, they would have the ability to file a complaint under one of the other two policies as applicable.
Right.
That's my view.
There are, there is language in both of those policies that talks about outside of the workplace use of
Right, right, okay.
Communications.
John? Is the current Facebook page that the town uses in the town's name?
Yes, Town of Groton Facebook page.
And what about Twitter?
Town of Groton Twitter.
Okay, we don't have any other ones?
No.
Police Department has one.
Town of Groton Police Department, Town of Groton Council, Town of Groton Library, Town of Groton Fire Department.
These are all Twitter accounts?
All Town of Gro-, no, no, I'm talking about the Facebook pages. They would all fall into this policy.
Because they can autograph. John goes individual Facebook or, or Instagram or Twitter, doesn't.
But for us to enforce what's here, we need to make sure that these things are in the town's name.
And they are, that's.
And I'm only asking this because this has grown over time and.
And there is a Groton Facebook page that is not the town, that is totally volunteer administered and heavily, heavily used for sharing of information, most of which is accurate.
Are you referring to the Talk About Groton?
Nope.
No.
No, there's a Facebook page.
There's a Town of Groton Facebook page with a lot of members, I used it today.
Yeah. It gets the most activity of any.
And who owns that?
What?
Who owns that?
I don't know.
It's got a name that moderates it, you know what, I mean.
It's not the town.
It's not, and it doesn't say Town of Groton, I think it's just Groton.
As long as it's a town, it's not there.
Yeah, it's not. So does someone wanna make a motion to approve the social media policy as presented?
So moved.
Minor tweak. All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome.
Thank you, Peter, for bringing that up.
Yeah, no, I thought that was a great, great suggestion.
This is a much less cumbersome and easily, and more easily enforceable policy.
The next policy is the Memorial Parks and Commons policy, and I know Becky, you were supposed to be working with Dawn Black on this one?
Yes, and Dawn Black and I have had a bit of conversation, and I can tell you that so, what I, what I've learned is that there is, our first request was a list of actual commons, parks, and fields, whether or not they have been named, just to know what there is. That list, I understand, has been prepared, but I don't have it yet. Nick and I think Anna actually worked on this, but Nick is out on paternity leave, and so the first step is to get that list, so we know what parks, commons, and I assume we'll rename it Fields once we get the list. The other part of the, the policy, which maybe is actually the meat of the policy, about the process in naming these, I have, as I said, been in touch with Dawn Black, and I think if and when we get to a point of wanting to to consider any changes in that, we should invite the park commissioners in to do it jointly with them.
And that's what this says, right?
Well, if, if we think that we're, we would make any changes in the way this is written, we should write, invite them in, is what I'm saying.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got you.
And I, I'm still in the process of trying to understand myself, there's a slight difference between the two processes, processes that are described here, one for commons and one for parks, and I don't know whether in practice there actually has been that difference, or why that exists. So I will get more information on that, and I'm sorry that I don't have it tonight.
Okay, so I will bring this one back.
Yes.
I have one on this one.
Yes.
Two, actually.
Go ahead.
The NIT is, there's an N after one nineteen in paragraph two A.
Yep.
That shouldn't, that shouldn't be there.
Yep.
When I did my write-up on the October seventeenth, I raised the issue of the athletic fields.
Right.
And I, I haven't seen a policy on how we decide to name athletic fields after people. And it would seem to me that, that ought to be embedded into
Yep.
this.
Yes.
I know, and I know there's one down on Forge Village Road.
Woidowicz.
Woidowicz, and I never wanna see that go away, but I don't know how it'd be.
Right, I, that is why I'm still waiting to get the comprehensive list, and then, and, you know, then we can proceed after that.
All right, so this is something that's gonna come back.
Anna has her hand up.
I, I know this is a work session, but.
Can you just grab the mic? Hopefully it's quick.
Well, I, I would just ask that you send this to the park commissioners, so that they can look at what you're reviewing, I mean.
I have sent it to Dawn, and we've gone back and forth.
I, I would ask that you send it to the administrator for the parks, so that it can be distributed to the park commissioners, and we can put it on our agenda as well.
Okay, this policy exists, and has existed, I think, for many years.
That's well and good, I, I'm just asking that if you're going to be discussing it, that you include the parks in your discussion, and ask, and I'm asking.
I think that's what I just said, Anna, that absolutely we will, and if, we, the listing is incomplete at this point. I asked for the up-to-date list, which I know has just recently been prepared, and that's why I didn't get it.
Yeah, it's, all of that information is in the, in the open space plan, and it designates who's maintaining it and who's responsible for it, and so it's all there.
Right.
So.
Yep.
I will provide a copy to the.
Thank you, Mark.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yep.
So we'll wait to hear back from the park commissioners after this is finally prepared, on their comments before we vote to adopt.
Exactly.
I think what we're saying is it should be addressed to the board.
Wait a minute.
It should be addressed to the board and sent to the administrator for that particular board.
What should be, the, the list?
The request.
The final policy.
Well, no, information about the creation of the policy.
Yes.
I think we can just.
That's what I'm saying.
I think that's what we've been saying.
I'm gonna call it myself, so I think, Mark, if you could just let them know that we're considering this?
Yes.
Send them the current policy, send them any other information we have, and then let them know when we'll be talking about it, that would be great.
It'll probably be sometime after the first of the year.
Agreed. All right, what next?
Financial policies, Allison has said that she's fine with this now, as is at the last meeting, so the board needs to vote the policy that has been adopted by both the finance committee and the finance team in compliance with our charter and bylaws. So I'd ask the Select Board to formally adopt the financial policies as presented.
Does someone wanna make that motion? I will make that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All ready. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Is, and I didn't see it, and I looked for it, and maybe I missed it. Is there any reference to the review of the capital plan by the new committee that we just appointed? Because I think there should be if there isn't. That was the only thing that I didn't see, so did I miss it?
Hold on, man.
Well, it's probably not there, because we just pointed that committee's.
I don't think there's anything in here about the capital budget. But let me look.
It says on page forty-one, "No projects are to be funded by debt authorized by town meeting unless these projects have been incorporated into and vetted by the town's capital planning process."
What page used to be on it?
Forty-one. Under capital planning.
It was a packet.
Yes, in the piece online.
So then that's, that's our policy now, that's our process, so I think it is addressed, Josh.
Yeah, because it is the part of the town's capital planning process, I would agree with that. All right, that's fine.
Any other concerns or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Related, however, since we just mentioned capital planning, the thought that occurred to me today, Mark, was that the capital planning committee should probably be notified about the Saturday morning meeting, in case they wish to attend.
When, when, we could do that. They're meeting, when are they meeting, Wednesday, and they're gonna give me their final recommendation, so that I can incorporate it into my plan for Thursday, so I'll, I'll let them know once I hear back from them on their proposals.
All right, what's the next one?
So, well, the next thing I had on here, before we get to the town manager review policy, was the operational policies and procedures, and I thought the board told me last week that you were going to eliminate this policy, but John is saying no, so I think we are not gonna, are we gonna eliminate it or not is the question?
That is the question.
I'm in favor of eliminating it, because I believe that it is just a sort of, at this point, a mishmash compilation of a bunch of policies that we've approved individually, and it actually, John, as you noted, this, this complicates things immeasurably, because it's contradictory, and I don't think we need it.
I'm not saying keep it the way it is, I'm saying clean it up.
But doesn't.
Because it describes many things that are not described elsewhere in the policy.
When I went through it, I'll, I'll agree with what John is saying, the one thing in there that is not in any other policy, you have, is, is the way the board operates meetings. That are elected chair.
Conduct.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yes, that's what I'm talking about, and the, and the way the board operates.
And then you've got how the board's organized.
Correct.
You've got the responsibilities of the chair, the vice chair, the clerk, regular meetings, special, working meetings, all defined, meeting procedures, executive session.
Well, that executive session, we have the policy on that.
And that could possibly come out, okay, it talks about who's responsible for doing minutes.
All right, I'll tell you what.
Has an appointment section, so I think this needs, there's stuff in here that we need to preserve.
Give me an opportunity, board, to go through it, I'll work with John, and I'll bring back a proposed shorter policy.
It even says there's a procedure for how we conduct dog hearings.
Yeah, we, we don't do that anymore, we've changed the way we handle that.
Well, then we can take that out, but let's not throw the whole thing out.
Okay, I will bring back, I'll work with John, and I'll bring back a draft.
I would agree with that.
I think if, if you guys find in your review that, that there are policies that, or pieces that should be broken out into separate policies, it may make sense to bring back three or four policies rather than one kind of procedural.
Well, that, once we get it perhaps put together, you can decide what, you know, whether to put it into multiple pieces or keep it all.
Yep.
Okay, I save the best for last.
Wait a minute, before you move on, because I, what did we end up just doing about the advisory committees?
Oh, I skipped over that, I'm sorry, I'm recommending that the board eliminate that policy.
So, I have a different opinion about that, I think that we should change the policy, policy to say that it's our, the, to set a procedure in which we will meet with all appointed committees on a regular three-year rotation.
Isn't that what everybody knows?
No, it says in the, in this that we'll meet them all every year. And that's impossible to meet, and it hasn't been done, obviously, but I think it's important to continue meeting regularly with appointed committees, I think of some of the ones that we have met with that I learned a lot from, and I think it also elevates and gives the public information about committees that they might not have ever heard of, that are doing important things. So I'd like to, I'd like a policy that says we will meet with all of our appointed committees with some regular frequency.
Are we talking about appointed committees or appointed advisory committees?
Well, I believe that there's, the distinction, the distinction of what is an advisory committee is kinda loose, so I don't know whether we wanted to use that word, or just say all appointed committees.
We can't define it, I don't see how we can legislate it.
Well, so, appointed committees, isn't the definition that you?
All appointed committees?
Yes. All, they're all appointed by us?
Everything's appointed by us now, for the most part.
I make regret, there are some committees that I nominate, and there are some committees that you appoint.
So, if we started, maybe, Mark, this discussion, I know you provided us a list once before, I don't have it right in front of me, a list of the committees we appoint, and a list of the committees you appoint.
That I nominate for.
Yeah, that you nominate.
So, so to me, the, the town report, Mark, contains a report out from every committee, correct?
That is one hundred percent correct, and that was our point to the board.
And that goes to every residential address?
It's posted, it's posted on line, you can pick it up at town meeting.
So, so to me, you know, personally, I think that this is unnecessary, we're gonna bring in committees either that we have business and questions with, or they're gonna come to us and request to come forward, or we're gonna have a joint meeting, but, you know, to, to kind of bring someone through once every three years is, I don't think accomplishes anything.
I mean, if there's a mitigating reason that we need to meet with a certain committee.
Absolutely, we would do that now.
Just right, like I said, there's an issue down with the conductor labs, and we don't meet with their, meet their board regularly, but we want an update, we say, would you come in and give us an update on what's going on?
Right. Yeah, so I don't think we need this policy.
So we don't need this at all?
I don't think we do.
I agree.
So, I mean, I see Olin there, and I know we had the invasive species committee before us, and I don't think it was because we had a concern, I think it was because they showed up, I don't know, maybe they asked to meet with us, but and I know that we had the Lost Lake, the Lakes.
Waste Water Committee?
No, they weren't the Waste Water Committee, they were the Watershed, Lost Lake Watershed.
Great Pond Advisory.
Great Ponds Advisory Committee. I think it was very helpful.
They request, they request, boards do request meetings with you when they have something they wanna talk about with the board.
I will make a motion that we eliminate this policy.
I would second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Me, I'm all ready.
Okay. So as I said, I save the best for last.
Was that a five, a five zero zero?
Four one.
Four one.
Four one, two one. So, the town manager review policy, so I.
First one in the pack?
First one in the pack, that's why I say I save the best for last.
What page is it on there for?
Page two, page one, page three. Let me go back.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Page three.
So, the, the problem with the town manager review policy is the open meeting law.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the open meeting law does not allow this board, or any board or committee, to deliberate outside a fully posted meeting. So the problem is, in the town of Wayland, the Way. So the problem is, in the town of Wayland, the Wayland Board of Selectmen conducted the Town Manager's Review, and they had all the board members compile their comments, they sent it off to the, to the chairman of the Select Board, the chairman of the Selectmen came up with a, a review, and then they, they discussed it at a public meeting. That was appealed to the courts, and you have what they call the Bolter Decision, and that basically said that it is illegal and a violation of the open meeting law for Select Board members to provide comments to one individual member. So our policy was written before the Bolter case, and we pretty much did what the town of Wayland did. I think every town did what the town of Wayland did, correct me if I'm wrong here. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what they did there was they not only sent the comments to the chair.
Correct.
The chair sent, then sent those comments around to other members.
Correct.
Before it got posted as a, as a.
And that's what we used to do, and that's what we used to do here. So, so now you have a lot of problems with the process, so the, the issue that we are trying to correct is the compilation of the board's individual comments, and what is a compilation of the board's individual comments? So the suggestion from Town Council was to have the HR Director receive the comments, put the compilation together, and then post it at a Select Board meeting, and have the Selectmen discuss it, the compilation at a, at a public meeting. After the Town Manager has a chance to review the compilation, because your policy allows comments from the Town Manager. Well, it, since the HR Directors are subordinate and employed to the Town Manager, it didn't make sense to do that. So then my recommendation was to have either Labor Council, I said Labor Council, or Town Council do the compilation. And we started to have that discussion last week, and then the whole issue came up of, well, what gets included in the compilation, is it everybody's comments? Well, that's really not a compilation. Um, is it a summary, what is it? And that's where we are right now, so I have a suggestion, just don't review the Town Man, no kidding, that was a joke, I was trying to be funny. Um, we have to figure out a way to, that wasn't funny.
Your explanation of it was funny.
Thank you. So the iss, the issue is, you know, the, the board, according to the, the charter, has to provide a summary review of the Town Manager. That's the public document, the summary review. So what's a summary? Is a summary every board's comment, that's not a summary, or maybe it is a summary. So we need to figure out how we're going to review the Town Manager, and how we're going to get a compilation for a summary review, and then how that becomes a public document. The way this policy is written right now with the compilation done by Town Council complies with the open meeting law. Because what happens is you all do your, the, the chair comes to a meeting, announces we're gonna start the review, gives the, gives it to me to do my self-evaluation, I do the self-evaluation, I provide that to each member of the board. The board does their individual evaluations, they are requiring with the policy to meet with the Town Manager to review their individual compilations, and then those, the individual reviews.
Then the Town Manager decides to make comments on each one.
Which he has the right to do.
I know, I just don't wanna miss a step.
Thank you, and so then, where we need to figure out what we're going to do is after the board members have the individual reviews done with the Town Manager, how do we get to the compilation and the summary without violating the open meeting law? That's what you need to decide, there's a proposal in here that goes to Town Council. That's one way to do it, but I don't know what else to do. I can, the Town Manager can do the compilation.
Um, so one thing I'll throw out there is that when I was on the school committee, we obviously reviewed the superintendent as a similar process, and what we did at that point was everyone would come to a workshop that wasn't televised, although it was open to the public, and there was, at that point, discussion, you know, question one, who wants their comments, is this, you know, and every board member had to kind of prioritize, this is something I'm gonna fight for, this is something I feel strongly about, these ones I'm gonna let go, and then the board kind of crafted a summary at that point.
That's one way to do it.
It, it worked much better than it probably should have, but.
I think it sounds great.
That is one way to do it.
I mean, I think that solves a lot of our problems.
Yeah, Josh.
And then there's absolutely another way of doing it, and you might have an objection to this, but I'm gonna float it anyway. The way we used to do this, back in two thousand eight, I think, that's when you were first hired?
Mm-hmm.
Your first review was in two thousand nine.
It was actually in two thousand nine, that's correct.
So, if we were to follow the procedures here, hand out the documents as stipulated here, turn the completed document in to HR, who in turn would turn them over to Town Council, or just turn them all over to Town Council. Town Council could prepare a summary of, just as stated here, of every individual member. But then, attached to the summary, you could attach all five of each individual member's.
That's not a summary.
The summary is what we approve, but the backup's there, I mean, each board member is entitled to their opinion, whether you agree with them or not, it's a completely different situation.
But that's, 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 the, the, the point is, is the charter says a summary evaluation. Having every single board member's individual comments is not a summary, you are, thereby, you might as well just release all of the individual evaluations under what you're saying. It's no longer a summary.
I, I'm not sure the summary word is correct. I, I think it's right, that is writing the final evaluation report of the Town Manager, that's what's being produced. Recommended performance evaluation for the Town Manager, which is then brought back, and we decide, do we stay with that, or do we modify that?
But.
So that's where the problem lies.
But that's how Allison's solution resolves that.
If, if we all work together at a workshop session to create it, there's no needing to bring it back, we all work on it together, and we create it together, and that becomes the summary that is.
I'm a little afraid that if we started in January, it would be December twenty-fifth of the following year before we got it done.
I, I think if, I think if we have each.
I'm not gonna disagree with you.
If we've each done our individual one, and we schedule a workshop evening for that purpose only, yes, it's gonna take some time to do it well, and we come out of there with something that we've all worked on together, that's the summary.
So on the school committee level, typically at the end of that evening, um, that document would come back to the board because it would, it would be the chair or someone else who would leave that open discussion session with, you know, pen scratch and notes here to change that, and then they would do that work, and then it would come back for the formal approval, which could happen in a more typical televised formal meeting. Yeah.
I'd like to see us give what's here a try, and recognize that we're gonna do it for the next year, and if we need to fine tune it after that, or if it just isn't working, we'll come up with another way. But I think we ought to give this a try.
Using the Town Council, is that, is that what this is?
Yes. The last five years in a row, we've had a different policy as to how to conduct this, correct? And each year, no matter how hard we try to comply, it doesn't work, or it doesn't work well. So, we can try for a fifth time the way John's saying, and if we're not happy about it, next year, we can try what Allison's saying.
I mean, to me, the, the concern with this policy, the way it's written, is that it, all of our pieces would go to Town Council, who would compile it, it would come back. One of us is likely to feel like, oh, but my important comment on three C didn't get included, and now we're right where we were last year in terms of, should I be publicly sharing my important comment, is that appropriate, is that relevant, or anything else?
But the way it was first written, Barry went and wrote it up, and gave it to us.
Yeah, well, I mean, if we, if we had.
Right, so we had the same debate, it was just Barry had written it up as opposed to Town Council.
But it had, well, it had already been finalized when we saw it.
Right, and we had that same debate of, I didn't feel important, question number three was included, so we went around and around. To me doing it in a workshop.
Either we trust the person we asked to put it together, or we don't.
Or we do it ourselves in a workshop setting.
If we do it ourselves, we don't spend money, if we send it to Town Council, we're spending money.
Um, I'm not sure that's a, a variable. Getting it right is what's most important.
I don't disagree, to me, this doesn't address the, you know, kind of the, the bumps in the road that we experienced last year.
I did, yeah, I would much rather try the workshop approach, the first, and see if we can make that work. I think it's a, we will come up with a true compilation of what our, we as a board think should be in that.
So if I, so if I understand, Allison, what you're proposing is, bless you, what you're proposing is, you, you start the process, you announce at a public meeting, we're starting the process, the Town Manager does his self, his or her self-evaluation. That self-evaluation is then delivered by the Town Manager to the individual members.
Yep.
They complete their evaluation, they meet with the Town Manager to go over that evaluation, the Town Manager has a right to comment on the individual evaluations.
I'd like to ask about that.
I'm sorry?
At, at the moment, yes, continue, and then we'll get back to that.
Then we schedule a workshop for the board to get, at a public meeting, all five evaluations, each Select Board gets all of that, now, my problem with that, then.
I don't, at, at, at the school committee level, we did not get each other's.
Okay, because I was gonna say. That becomes a public document.
Everyone came to the table with their own pen scratch and.
So then we sit down at a meeting, and then we, we do a formal evaluation of the Town Manager.
Right.
At a, at a workshop.
Except I would kind of imagine, and I'd ask you, I mean, that's board members not with the Town Manager at that point.
It's a public meeting, the, the superintendent had the right to attend or not, the Town Manager could attend or not, it.
Why wouldn't you want the Town Manager there if you're reviewing him, he should be there. You're reviewing him, why would you exclude him from that meeting?
Thank you, well, we, obviously, we couldn't anyway, because it would be a public.
Well, regardless, why would you wanna exclude the Town Manager?
I don't, I don't think that's a conversation we need to get into right now, I agree, but.
But I, I did wanna, uh, raise the question, Mark, that you said the Town Manager has the right to make comments. It doesn't ever say that in the policy that, that, as far as I can find.
He said it right in his review.
Yes, he can write on the, on the compilation, not on the individuals.
No, there's a section on each individual Select Board member that he can comment back on, and each board member is supposed to report back to the Town Manager after distributing, distributing it, I believe, to discuss each of the evaluation directly with the Town Manager, has that been taken out?
No, not in there.
It says each. Okay, so. Yeah, the member shall provide written comments. And meet with the Town Manager to review their comments, doesn't say the Town Manager can write responses to their comments.
On the form, there is something in there that allows the Town Manager to respond to the evaluations, it's right on the form.
Section three. The form doesn't necessarily correlate with the instructions.
Yeah, I has a question about something on the form, but I don't have the form in front of me, so.
So at this point, from a procedural process, I would ask, does the board want to, one option would be that I could get the copy of the school committee policy, kind of morph that with this, so that we're potentially compiling that summary in a workshop meeting, but the rest of our process is remaining the same way for discussion? I can do that, or we can, if we wanna stick with something more akin to what we have in front of us, we can continue to work on the details.
I'd like to see the school committee's written policy about it.
I'd like to look at it, too.
So I will get that, and then, Mark, we can work on.
For the purpose of understanding it better, could you all, could you just send us the blank form?
Sure.
Not, we're not gonna use it, and could I also just ask, do I understand correctly that we actually won't be doing this until after June thirtieth because of the way we changed the contract?
No. It will start, it starts very similarly, and we will wind it up, I think, in May or early June, at the end of the fiscal year, as opposed to at the end of the calendar year.
I think Mark's contract says that the evaluation period will run until June thirtieth. It was gonna be an eighteen-month evaluation period.
Yeah, I.
Okay.
Well, that's correct, Becky's right.
And he talked about it being finished in November, after the end of the fiscal.
Right, so we have some time to work this out.
Yes.
So, see you here all summer, Dan.
Exactly.
So, just so I understand what, what's going to happen, Allison, you're gonna get a copy of the school policy to share with the Select Board members. Becky, you want a copy of the current review form?
Yes, please.
We are five minutes into the meeting.
Nope, 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 the, the agenda specifically says that the regular meeting starts at the conclusion of the workshop, there is no specific time. Other than at seven fifteen, there is a motion to reconsideration to get, to, to look at, so. I just wanna make sure I got everything right here, so we're gonna get a copy of that, and I'm gonna send a copy of the review form to all the board members. So just to go through this once so that I know exactly where we are, the Town Manager Review Policy we just talked about, the standards of conduct and anti-discrimination, equal employment, opportunity policy are tentatively approved, subject to the revision by Town Council, which I will get to the board and bring back to a meeting. You approve the investigation policy, you approve the liaison policy. The meetings on holiday policy, you're going to bring back after you hear from the Council of.
Interface Council.
Meetings with advisory committee policy was abolished, social media policy was approved, memorial park and common policy will be brought back and shared with the Park Commission, financial policies were approved, Select Board operational policies, I'm gonna work with John Geiger and bring back a proposed policy on that.
Yep.
We are almost done with our review policies.
It's feeling rather iterative, we're never gonna get there, yeah.
There's one more policy that you included in our packet, um, which you sent out today, which is the Committee Vacancy.
Oh, yes, Josh.
Which we had approved back in November.
You sent that out today?
I emailed it to everybody.
Which we had approved back in November, um, and based on the agenda item at seven fifteen, um, and what the outcome of that is, I would ask that we bring that back for discussion at our next meeting, please.
Yep, we can do that. Is that, is that in our packet, or was it a separate?
I mean, it's on page fifty-seven of the packet, that's right here, as well as.
Policies packet?
Mark emailed out a copy of that this afternoon, I believe, or this morning.
I mailed it out to the board this morning at eleven twenty-five AM.
It was magic, just as I went to my computer to ask if it had been sent to me.
There it was.
Did you get that?
So.
Oh, yes, I did, okay.
We'll discuss that at our next more session, I guess?
And also.
I did receive it.
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
Uh, that Congress passed a paid twelve weeks of maternity, paternity, childcare leave, right?
I believe they did, yeah.
I don't, I do not know when that goes into effect, but that will mean we'll have to revise some policy, right?
I thought we said the policy is to be in compliance with that. This, what the, the state's paid family medical leave?
You have to leave that.
The federal, the feds just, uh.
I think that's only for federal employees, I mean, you're talking about paid time, that's only federal employees that.
Of course, duh, I thought that was like of the law of the land, and.
Yeah, the town actually gets opt-in or opt-out of some of that.
Well, the state, the state one town meeting, I believe, has to adopt it.
Right.
Oh, so it doesn't affect us, I was, I thought it was for everybody.
I just read the newspaper, but that was my understanding.
Yeah, you're, of course, it makes much more sense that way.
All right. So that concludes our policy piece, I think?
That concludes the workshop, yes.
Now, state at seven fifteen, agenda item of this. If you will, I'll be here first, yeah.
So I mean, I kind of re, recall to order as we emerge from our policy working session and resume our regularly posted meeting. I've kind of quarantined myself off at the end here in an attempt that no one else gets this pulled. As is typical, we will begin with announcements and a review of the agenda, followed by public comment. Under the Town Manager's Report, we have potential discussion of our agenda. We will have some discussion with input from the town clerk on polling locations. We will have discussion of, or approve the proposed goals for the Select Board, we will potentially have discussion about separate goals for the Town Manager. We will continue and potentially complete the approval of the annual licenses that we began last week, and we will get an update on the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget. At seven fifteen, there has been a request for a motion to reconsider appointment to the CPC Committee, um, so we will deal with that at that point, we then have other business that may come up, ongoing issues A through J, an opportunity for liaison reports, and one set of minutes from December ninth to be approved. Does anyone have any announcements?
Oh, I have, oh, no, I don't.
Did you have, Becky, go ahead?
Well, it's.
Oh, actually, I do have one announcement.
Let him go.
I've spoken to the HDC on the Sandwich Board signs that the board asked about at the last, at the last meeting, and the HDC has approved the signs that you see for, for Gin Vine, for Prescott, and for, um, Station House Restaurant, for a year. They were trying a temporary idea policy to see how it worked. The other individual signs that are posted, Sandwich Board signs, they have not approved, and we're in the process, we take those down every time they come up and tell them that they're not allowed to do that, other than those three signs. The HDC is looking for recommendations from this board or anybody on how to address it better. So, I, I, I guess I'm putting it out to the board and to the public, if you have any ideas, the HDC. the HDC really wants to hear from you on how to address the way individual sandwich board signs are showing up in the historic district.
And they're not just sandwich boards, they're the wire signs, too.
Yes, any temporary type sign, but I will tell you, the sign for Prescott, the sign for Forge and Vine and the sign for Station House have been approved for a year by the HDC. The board had asked me to follow up on that, and that's your answer.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yep, Forge and Vine and Station House. The one that's sitting here on the corner of Town Hall. Those are legitimately approved and permitted by the HDC.
Very good, thank you.
That's all I have.
So, Mike, this isn't an announcement, everybody knows there's snow on the way. Mark, could you just review for the public what exactly the process is and deciding?
On Town Hall?
On Town Hall, yeah.
So what happens is tomorrow morning, when I wake up, depending on what the forecast is, I will reach out to the Public Works Director and the Police Chief and the Fire Chief. I'll get input from them on the conditions of the roads and what their thoughts are and at that point, we'll make a decision early tomorrow morning. Sometimes I consult with Josh because I know he's out on the road at that time and I know there's somebody I can call at three o'clock in the morning that will answer the phone. So, I'll consult and then we'll make a decision and we'll post it on the town's Facebook page, the website, we'll tweet it out and we'll have somebody put a sign on the doors here at the Town Hall. So depending on what we wake up to tomorrow morning, we'll make a decision whether there'll be a delay or a call or something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Public comment? All right. Mark, do you want to move into the...
Yeah, because I have something I could talk about before the seven fifteen agenda item, it'll be quick. The town clerk was going to be here on the 23rd when we were scheduled to meet, but since we moved that meeting up to this week, I had put it on the agenda and the town clerk informed me that he's still out of town and won't be able to make the meeting tonight. But what I wanted to do is I wanted to put this on the board, on the board's mind so that you're aware of it. As you know, voting in precinct one was moved to Town Hall during the senior center construction project. Now that the center is open, we're going to ask the board to send precinct one back to the center in West Marotten. So we've also been talking about polling locations and complaints that we've received from our voters having to do with the country club and others. So we're coming up with a proposal that basically would put precinct one back at the center. We wanted to put two precincts there, but unfortunately, there's not enough parking right now. So we'll leave precinct one there and that should be sufficient. Town Hall worked really well as a temporary location for precinct one. So what we want to do is we want to take the country club, there were two precincts there, precincts two and three, and only have precinct two voting at the country club and move precinct three here to the Town Hall. We think that works. It's a little bit of extra work for the town clerk, but it doesn't cost any more money because each precinct has to have all their own election workers anyway. When you go to the, when you go to the country club, there are two sets for each of the precincts there. So we'll bring that back to you in January, but I wanted to put it in your minds right now to think about it. So if you have any concerns, we can address it before the town clerk comes in to talk about it because we have to get the notices out so many days before the presidential primary in March. So, it's important that we make that decision sometime in January, so I wanted you to start thinking about it now. We will divide it up into three voting locations, Town Hall, Country Club and the Center. Any questions on that? Yes, John?
The voting in March, is that the same as the voting in November?
Early voting? They have not voted to change, they have not changed that yet. There's talk that primaries will allow early voting a week instead of two weeks before, but that has not been implemented yet.
It's the one thing that we're still struggling with is that some people find it difficult, if not impossible, to go to the country club. Even though we've got the parking, we still have a very long walk if you aren't entitled to the parking and so forth.
The handicap parking.
The handicap parking. And I was part of one of these discussions and what we came up with was that senior, or people who find it difficult to go there can do early voting here in this building.
Absentee ballots.
Right.
Or absentee ballot, as opposed to having to actually go physically to that site. Now, that won't work for this year, at least for this primary.
Absentee ballots would work.
Absentee ballots will work right now, but for the primary, you can do an absentee ballot.
Correct. All right, so I'll schedule this for some time in January. So Allison, it's seven fifteen.
It is, indeed.
And on here, if I may, just to explain the process, there was a request from a member of the select board for reconsideration of the vote that was taken last week to appoint Carolyn Perkins to the Community Preservation Committee. A couple of things for the board's information. One, Carolyn is a legitimate member of the Community Preservation Committee unless the board changes that appointment. So she currently serves on the Community Preservation Committee. Under the, under the Robert's Rules of Orders, if there's going to be a request for reconsideration or a motion for reconsideration, it has to be made by the person, a person on the prevailing side. So, the three people who were on the prevailing side of last week's vote was Becky Pine, Josh Beegan and John Geiger. Any one of those three members can make a motion for reconsideration. Once that motion for reconsideration is put on the table, anybody can second the motion. You don't have to be on the prevailing side to second the motion, okay? Only you can, you have to be on the prevailing side to make the motion. If the motion is seconded, then you open up a debate on whether or not you're going to reconsider. Once the motion for reconsideration is either approved or defeated, if it's defeated, the issue's over. If it's approved, then you get into a debate on, you know, you're back to square one. You have to appoint these to the Community Preservation Committee and you go through that process. Is that clear? Is that, I just want to make sure everybody understands how that process works.
Yep.
Okay, so...
So before we delve in, I just want to add a couple of things to that kind of upfront summary. One is that, just to clarify, that the process to this point, although slightly messy perhaps, has been in compliance with all of our policies and past practices. So there's nothing there that's particularly problematic. In terms of logistics, I'd just like to request that we take this kind of very slowly, one step at a time. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion, not a debate or discussion or laundry list of reasons why, but a motion around reconsideration of this appointment.
Before I offer a motion, as I'm the one who brought this forward, I think in order to potentially get success with the motion or get somebody even second the motion, can I explain why I brought this up?
Concisely.
It's going to take a little work.
Concisely.
It's going to take a little more work than doing it concisely.
Well, then make a motion and we'll see if someone seconds it and before we vote, you can make your argument, but...
Okay. I make a motion to reconsider the appointment of Carolyn Perkins to the Community Preservation Committee.
Is there a second?
That's what I wanted to explain it.
I will second it for discussion purposes.
Thank you. So, last week.
Concisely.
I will do my best, okay? Last week, we had an agenda item to appoint Carolyn Perkins to the Community Preservation Committee. It seemed very routine to me at the time and let me delve in a little further and say, first of all, that we had two folks apply for this position, Carolyn Perkins and Marlena Gilbert. Our policies dictate that they are sent to the committee to which they would be appointed to, to be vetted out and reviewed and a recommendation then typically comes forth from that committee and it's brought forward to us to either vote in favor of or to turn down. If we turn that down...
Or to interview, as we see it.
We can then interview the two individuals in this case and I was caught off guard, as well as I feel my fellow board members were, when Marlena showed up at our meeting expressing interest and wanting to speak about her reasons that she felt that she should be appointed. I do want to note that Carolyn and Marlena have served this town for many years and they have served this town very well in their capacities, many capacities that they've served. They've done an outstanding job and I was really torn once I heard Marlena speak as to what to do and I delayed my vote. But following with our policies and procedures, we had a recommendation and I voted in favor of Carolyn following that. When I got home, I was really bothered by what had occurred and thought about it all night and thought about it all day on Tuesday of last week and came to the conclusion that typically committees do not contain select board members, other committees. However, I did begin to think that the Affordable Housing Trust is mandated within its charter and its creation and articles of organization that two select board members must serve or they're designees on the Affordable Housing Trust.
You mean the Community Preservation?
Excuse me?
You mean the Community Preservation.
No, I meant the Affordable Housing Trust.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that in addition to the Affordable Housing Trust, the housing authority under the state statutory obligation has an appointee by the governor and in the case of the Community Preservation Committee, it mandates that five members, one from planning or they're designee, one from conservation or they're designee, one from parks or they're designee, one from historic district commissioner they're designee and one from housing where they're designee.
Can I just correct something? It doesn't say or they're designee. It's a member of the planning board, it's a member of the conservation commission, a member of the...
But in the case of the other two appointments.
Those are select board.
Those are select board appointments and those select board appointments are select board members or they're designee, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, with that said, it did not occur to me at the time that this appointment was a select board appointment, okay? And nobody ever asked any member of the select board if they were interested in serving before, at least nobody ever asked me if I was interested in serving before it went out to other members of the public to become the designee of the select board. As a designee of the select board, I think that while it's great that the Community Preservation Committee vetted out the individuals that were interested, the primary people that should, should be the appointing authority, which in this case is the select board as they're designee, to make sure that the individual that will be appointed meets the, at least the majority of the select board's criteria in terms of how they vote, what they believe in, what their reasons are. And last week, we were very unprepared, at least in my opinion, to interview both people who had applied for the position. That said, had I been asked, and I have been following the CPC for a long time and have applauded them for at least ninety-five percent of the recommendations that they've made and maybe five percent of it I haven't agreed with. And I am doing it as concisely as I can, Allison. But because I've spoken against some things and whatnot in the past, I think that I would like to have a better understanding of the CPC and I've worked very hard with this board, the town manager and the finance committee to get a firm understanding of the finances of this town. And this is one aspect of the town that takes a tremendous amount of money in terms of taxpayer dollars and I want to understand it better. So, I would ask for the motion to reconsider that first should have come to see if one of the five of us wanted to serve on that and that wasn't afforded. So as a result, hence my motion for reconsideration, isn't necessarily to pick one candidate over another, it's to see if this board would designate me or another board member as our representative.
Would anyone else like to speak to this?
I want, want to show where I came from last week. I wasn't opposing or in favor of either candidate, it was the process for me. When it was thrown in our face, when it came in front of us, as it came in front of us, I was, being the newest member on here, Josh, our school meeting this now and a few things, but I looked at it as one of our appointments, I thought we would, we should have had more time to interview one, two, three, four of the candidates and we should have been doing the interviewing. I love the idea, I like the idea that the committee and all the committees do this and recommend someone, that's great, but we were the final appointing authority and it came out of nowhere, that's why I voted the way I voted. Having said that, it was very uncomfortable for me and for a lot of other people in the room, I'm sure. And I didn't, I didn't like the way it went. I voted the way I voted because it went that way, but I thought we interviewed them at the time, albeit we weren't prepared for it. So I considered it, being on the losing side, not the majority side, I thought it went the way it went and I left there saying, okay, the process took its place so somebody needs to tell me why that, why the process is what it is and we didn't actually interview the two candidates. And I'm coming from the losing side saying that Ms. Perkins was appointed. I was on the opposing side, I need to hear a better argument of why we need to reconsider it because I considered that we interviewed the people that evening, albeit it was thrown at us and I wasn't prepared to do that and maybe we could have done a better job had we were presented with the two candidates and the committee's recommendation. That's where I'm coming from and I haven't made up my mind at this point.
Okay. John Geiger, Becky?
This is the committee vacancy policy that we're going by. It reads, "Select board appointed committee." "Once a recommendation has been made to the select board..." Well, let me back up a minute here. Yeah, all right, let me go. "Once a recommendation is made to the select board, the board may choose to take the recommendation of the committee or vote to make the appointment at a public meeting of the board."
You just...
But this is not a select board appointed committee.
But then they can also choose to reject, I think that comes on the next page, and interview the candidates.
That is correct.
To not take the recommendation but to interview.
That is correct.
I'm not...
I don't see anywheres in here, and I may just be missing it. It says there ha, the committee has to vote, has to interview and vote on the individual candidates.
Right, it says we may choose to take the recommendation and vote.
Right.
But then there's another place where it says...
It can't be under the town management appointment committee.
I think I'm reading what's on here.
So to me, I'll come back to you guys when you've kind of figured it out. To me...
Could you put the policy?
It's up there right now. What it says is, "Once a recommendation is made to the select board, the board may choose to take the recommendation of the committee and vote to make the appointment or choose to interview the candidates themselves." So, once you receive a recommendation from a committee, the select board can say, okay, what you've done or you can say, well, wait a minute, we don't want to do that, we want to interview both candidates. That's what your policy says.
Yes, and my suggestion going forward would be that we clarify that we'll make the decision at one meeting as to whether or not we're going to take their recommendation or we want to interview, but if we decide we want to interview, we do that at the next meeting. I think everybody needs that kind of time to prepare, but that's irrelevant. That's a policy decision. I would like to...
That's not the current policy. I'm not saying it isn't a good thing, but it's not.
It would, I think it would clarify for the future. If you were done, John? I didn't mean to interrupt, but I did have some comments.
Concise.
Yeah, so I don't think that, ever since the Community Preservation Committee was created, ever since we accepted it, I don't think that a select board member or a selectman has ever served, has ever been appointed on the committee to be the select board member.
No select board, sitting select board member has represented the board on the CPC, that is a correct statement.
So we have always voted to appoint the two at-large people as representatives?
Which is, you could do whatever, whoever, the way the law reads is it's to appoint these by the select board. It could be a member of the select board or not.
And at this point, we're not talking about which of the alternatives before us we would be thinking about, we're simply reconsideration or no.
So, well, I think it's lovely of you to step forward and volunteer. I think that the process has already happened and I don't think it's incumbent upon anybody to ask you individually or a board member to apply. It may be smart in the future for us to decide as a board whether to advertise a vacancy or whether to consider appointing, but I think sort of changing the process at this point... but I think sort of changing the process at this point for this particular vacancy would be very inappropriate. I am totally happy with the decision that we made and with all due respect, I don't know that I I see a reason to think that, you know, it would, we would make a better decision if we considered a member of ourselves. I think we have a very qualified person that we've appointed.
Can I respond to that?
Concisely.
The policy itself is flawed, as I tried to explain, and if I didn't do a good job at it, I need to do a better one. The way I look at it is, there's at least two committees. One, the Affordable Housing Trust, and two, the Community Preservation Committee, where a member of the select board is specifically, or two members of the select board or they're designees are specifically called out. The flow of the process- Excuse me?
That's not correct. It says two at-large members appointed by the select board.
Mark, I thought we had this discussion earlier today.
But she could be a member of the board.
It could be, it could be, absolutely, but it does-
What Josh is saying is correct.
To me, there's a difference between, to me, there's a difference between two at-large members appointed by the select board versus when the terminology is a member of the select board or they're designee.
Right, I would agree that I think that's-
How does the state state the makeup of a Community Preservation Committee?
Allison just read, a member of the Planning Board, a member of the Conservation Commission, a member of the Housing Authority, a member of the Historical, the Historical Commission, two members appointed by the select board.
And one of parks.
And a member of the parks, sorry. A member of the parks. But there's nothing to prohibit the selectmen, Josh is right.
Absolutely.
And what I'm saying is that none of us, or at least I was not made aware, of this vacancy because if there is a vacancy, I believe it goes to the chair, is the way the policy works?
I believe we had talked about this previously and asked the town manager to put this on the webpage as a vacancy.
We did.
And vacancies are posted and I, you know-
To me-
If somebody came in today and said, you know, I didn't know there was a vacancy and I would have applied, I think we would say, well, okay, that's nice of you, but we've already made the appointment and please keep your eyes open and check the website and there will be other vacancies posted.
John, did you have something else that your hand was up to?
I agree, the policy can be improved. But the fact of the matter is, this is the policy that was in place. If a member of the board had wished to be a candidate for this position, I would presume that that person would have to go through the same process of being interviewed by that committee to determine who they're going to recommend. So if that's something we want, you know, to do in the future, we can. But we voted here, we never took a vote to find out, we never asked if anybody objected to the appointment of the of the recommended candidate. And then we had a public speaker make their comments.
Yep.
So I I for one just don't see any reason at all to change what we voted on.
How we vote-
Yep, so Marlene, you have your hand up. I just want to make sure that before you speak, it's relevant to to process and reconsideration process as opposed to candidacy and, and you concise as well.
Absolutely. There's two points that I'd like to make in regards to the process and appropriateness, which has to do with the process. On my way up here on Monday, as I passed the downstairs room where the CPC board is held, I believe it's inappropriate and not appropriate for process nor respectful to have packets prepared for an individual that is not yet appointed. But yet that is exactly what I saw as I passed that room. A second, as I stepped in this room waiting for the meeting to begin, Becky Pine, select board member, asked Perkins whether it was okay for her to be at the meeting up here or downstairs at the CPC as if she was already appointed. If anything, that represents bias. And I just want to bring that to the attention of this community in this board, that although it was a select board appointment, another board decided that it was already done. And that, in my opinion, is reason to reopen this consideration.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm not going to take a ton of public comment, I'll take one more, concisely.
It it's just difficult to understand how a member of the select board could not have known about a vacancy. It is, there is clear that there is no special entitlement to select board members to fill this vacancy. It is just the same entitlement as everyone else. And lastly, with regard to this being a select board appointment, I'll read from Gilbert's opening statement. "It is my perspective that this is your appointment, much like the Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, Parks Commission, and Planning Board have designated their members to the Committee Preservation, Community Preservation Committee. This is the select board's appointment." So I think it was made very clear and and certainly clear by the applicant, it should be equally clear to members of the select board who serve on the board and have served on it for many terms, what the process is and whose appointment this is. I don't understand the confusion.
Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that.
I don't think that's necessary.
Well, somebody called you out on a certain issue.
Concisely. This will be the final comment on this topic.
There's a tremendous amount of documents that this board reviews and there's a tremendous amount of vacancies that occur and a tremendous amount of licenses and reappointments that we have to deal with all the time. And not every word can be internalized like a computer. Not every document can be internalized and remembered like a computer. This is a very important board in this town. And I think that money is tight in this town and money has to be spent very carefully, whether it's within our budget, whether it's in the CPC, whether it's in the schools. And just because one individual member of the public thinks that one individual member of the board of selectmen should remember every little thing, life doesn't work that way.
Thank you. So the motion on the table, don't correct me if I'm wrong, is to reconsider our appointment of last week? Is that the gist of it? And that motion was made and seconded? All in favor of reconsidering?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 All right, thank you. So we, the appointment will stand.
Back to my town manager report, Allison?
Yes, please, thank you.
So I've attempted to draft a document outlining the goals you established in your December ninth workshop. So I think I, I think I got everything and I've given you the four that you did. If you'd like, I can review those and we can talk about them. Goal number one is to work with the Planning Board, the Land Use Director, and the Housing Coordinator to review the final housing production plan. Goal number two, a thorough review of the town zoning regulation to determine where changes can be made to promote affordable housing, should be completed in the spring of 2020. Boynton Meadows Final Accounting. The select board in conjunction with the Affordable Housing Trust and Community Preservation Committee should review and create a report on the final accounting of the town's investment into the Boynton Meadows project. And goal number four, schedule a workshop with the Community Preservation Committee, a representative from the Community Preservation Coalition, which is the state organization, to review the town's participation in the Community Preservation Act.
Correct.
Those were the four goals I believe the board discussed last week.
And those are to be added to the existing goals, some of which have already been accomplished.
Correct.
It will be added to that.
And I'm sorry, I put Becky's name, I didn't take that out, that should not be there. You have to assign members, I apologize for that typo.
So let's at this point talk about whether these are, first of all, whether this is accurate and second of all, whether we want to approve these four goals.
That's, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So-
So does anyone feel that there are inaccuracies, first of all?
I would tweak the wording of number four. I'm not sure that our goal was to determine, but it was just to educate ourselves more.
So instead of saying determine-
We can review perhaps?
Review the town's participation?
I would be, I would prefer that, yeah. I think that's more what we were talking about.
Any other kind of-
Number four.
Accuracy?
Review instead of determine.
Could we have that again, please?
Yeah, so right now it says, "Determine the future of town's participation" and take out the words, "determine future."
Kind of in the title.
Yep, and then change it to, "Review town's participation in the Community Preservation Act." I think that's what Becky's saying. Did I get that right?
Yes. I had, other than that, I think everything that was written is fine and I'm actually happy to take responsibility for number one and number three.
Okay, so let's do this kind of one step at a time. I have a question on the first goal, Mark. I'm wondering if if this isn't part of our, the select board goals, how does that change in any way the process that's going to unfold?
On the housing production plan?
Right, I mean, my understanding is that these groups are going to continue to do what they're doing and what we've outlined here regardless, correct?
Absolutely, but I think the the important one on the measurable benchmark and that's where I changed it a little bit, where I say, how are we going to review the housing bucket money towards the housing production plan? How can we do that? So you're right, the Planning Board, the Select Board and the and the Housing Coordinator are working on getting that housing production plan adopted. And then what we need to do is talk about how we're going to implement it once it's adopted and how we're going to leverage the funds in the community housing bucket. I I, if I was confusing in the way I wrote that, I apologize, but I'm just trying to-
No, I mean, my my question, I guess, to the board is whether, to me, I I don't, to me, the the goal and the the benchmark are really around, should we be using this bucket of money and if so, how? Rather than kind of inserting ourselves into a process that's already happening and and unfolding. I mean, I don't, you know, if for some reason the select board didn't agree with the Planning Board, Land Use Director and Housing Coordinator, to me, that shouldn't necessarily hold up, you know, they have their their tasks, this should be unfolding. That we don't really need to insert ourselves, other than obviously we have an interest in this, but we don't need to insert ourselves into the the gears.
So so, so I I got you, so housing production plan and then the the goal, or actually say, housing production plan, use of housing community funds for implementation? Is that what I'm hearing? Am I hearing that right?
I mean, to me, that's more, the appropriate goal of the select board would be to look at different opportunities to use the money in the housing bucket and then to, you know, brainstorm or prioritize or discuss alternatives.
But so I think the reason that the housing production plan gets mentioned in here is that this is a document that we're spending some money on to create-
Through a grant, we got a grant.
Got a grant. So that rather than reinvent the wheel, it's to understand what that product, what that says and what we can do to implement the recommendations. So I I, I agree with what you're saying, that we shouldn't be inserting ourselves into something where we don't belong. But if, I think it's more to to collaborate and understand what part we could play in implementing whatever this plan recommends.
When is the plan slated to be finalized?
I think January, February timeframe is when it's supposed to-
I think January is when it's supposed to come, but I don't know for sure.
I know Karen's almost done with it, she's been working with Takashi on it.
And, I mean, I suppose without knowing what the plan's going to say, it's a little bit hard to say we're going to jump on board and and rush to implement the recommendations. So I don't want to get trapped into a situation like that. I guess the goal is to understand the recommendations and move forward if possible.
Well, I think the, I think the board has a right to work on the implementation of the plan with the Planning Board and the Housing Coordinator. So maybe if we change the goal to, after adopted plan, determine implementation steps, including the use of community preservation funds.
Yep.
Because there's, like I said, there's a half a million dollars there.
Right.
And I think everything else works.
Yeah, I want to see them finalize it and then we talk with them about-
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think we have to be careful how we say that because we can't tell the Community Preservation Committee what projects to fund.
No, but we can make a recommendation to them.
Considering?
Yes.
So it's more considering?
Yes.
Or looking at alternatives or-
Right.
But we need to be real careful on that, I think.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Are there other questions or comments on one? How about number two?
So the Planning Board is already exploring this, so I I'm not sure whether it should be our goal to do a thorough review of this.
Thorough review is, you're right, but the way, I talked, I talked to Takashi about this and the Planning Board is drafting some zoning regulation changes for this. And they are probably going to be scheduling a public hearing sometime this spring.
Right.
It it is at that public hearing where the board, the select board should attend that public hearing. So when I'm talking about a workshop, it should be at that particular public hearing. Takashi thought that was a great idea. So this is, I think, I don't think you need to change the way this is written. I think it, we will do what it says here, we're going to review it with the Planning Board.
I would just say, I'm sorry, where it says goal, I would just say, we review the town's zoning regulation, no, we review the changes proposed by the Planning Board for the town zoning regulations.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think we have to start reviewing them all ourselves.
And are they, Mark, do you know, are they looking at kind of all of the regulation, the zoning regulations?
They they are doing a review of them, yes.
Okay.
Relative to housing.
Well, and that's my my question, so being somewhat familiar with the regulations and the process, are they looking at things like setbacks? I mean, that's not-
That I'm not sure.
I think they're looking at-
I I'm not sure.
I think they're looking at loosening restrictions on accessory units.
Yes.
And and I understand that there are, it's a complicated-
I do.
Because subdivisions that were built under the flexible development bylaw may have restrictions on them that are separate from everybody else.
So so we'll change this goal to say, "Review changes made by Planning Board."
Proposed.
Proposed, proposed by Planning Board, thank you Becky. Proposed by Planning Board to create more affordable housing. And then I'm going to change the goal to say that a review of the, take out the word thorough, a review of the Planning Board's proposals should be done before the spring of 2020, right? And then the measurable benchmark will be, attend the Planning Board's public hearing on their proposed changes.
Right.
Doing the same thing?
Somewhere's in there is a need, I think, to to have dialogue between the Planning Board and the Housing Coordinator. So that what the Planning Board does is consistent with what the Housing Coordinator is looking to do. As opposed to Planning Board makes a bunch of changes to zoning and then just sort of dumps it on the, on the Housing Coordinator. You see where I'm coming from? There needs to be a co-
Right. So my my-
Cooperation in in tying those things together and maybe we can help with that. Of course, some part of us can help with that.
So so my concern with this is that, you know, the topic of kind of inclusionary zoning and creating more opportunity for affordable housing is much, much, much larger than just looking at accessory use. So if if what we want to do is to look at affordable housing opportunities and inclusionary zoning, that's how I read this. So if really what we want to do is support the Planning Board's decision process around accessory use, we need to call that out specifically because that's like two percent of what I thought we were proposing here.
Oh. So then maybe the goal as originally drafted was what the board was talking about.
I don't know, I'm not sure that-
No, I think that's exactly what it is, you're right.
I mean, to me, a review of the town zoning regulations to determine where changes can be made to promote affordable housing would involve setbacks that might- setbacks. It might involve new zoning areas. It might involve smaller parcel sizes. It might involve changing the circle of, you know, housing construction. It could change frontage. All, all these different things that I don't think are within the purview of what we're really talking about doing here.
So I guess that opens questions about the fact that the planning board is, the, the board charged with overseeing that. I'm not sure that our entire board, well, first of all, knows enough about the zoning, but would, would be wanting to send the message that we want to see a wholesale, revision, or consideration of wholesale revisions in the, in the zoning code.
Right.
I mean, I think you personally have a lot to offer, to suggest to them during this process, but I'm not sure that we as a board are at that point.
Right. So I, I mean, I would say that our, our goal would be something akin to support the planning board and follow their process to review accessory dwelling unit regulations or something. That it's, it's a much narrower piece. And then the measur- measurable benchmark would still be, you know, to attend a workshop meeting perhaps, to understand what they're proposing.
That would be the public hearing.
Give them feedback, yeah.
So when, when the plan comes back in...
The housing plan?
The housing plan. What's, who approves it?
I do not know.
The housing production plan?
Yeah, the state.
We take that plan, and we deliver it, as Josh says, to the state.
Okay.
They approve the plan.
Okay, so now we have the approved plan.
Correct.
So one of the things I'm thinking about is, so we have the plan. You go to the planning board and say, how can you help us achieve this plan?
Through zoning.
Through zoning. Okay.
So one and two could be combined.
Right.
Conceivably, yes. But it's going to them and saying, here's what we've got to accomplish. Now, what are the things, if any, that you could modify in zoning that would help achieve these goals?
Right.
And we get what we get, or whoever gets it, gets it, and then you continue your, your process of getting to, getting it done.
So basically, part of the implementation of the housing production plan can be working with the planning board on zoning and figuring out how to leverage the half a million dollars in the housing bucket.
Yes, they both, they are all tied together.
They're tied together, so one and two should be one goal, is what John said. I think he's right. That's a, that's a good point.
Yep.
And then supporting the planning board on their accessory stuff, that, that's just going to happen, because they are within that four. That's not at all.
Well, I don't know what's in the housing plan, but...
No, 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 I'm talking about the accessory piece that the planning board's working on now.
Certainly, a lot of the comments that came back from the survey talked about accessory apartments.
Right, which is why I think the planning board has already started down that road. I guess, assuming that that will be part of the final report.
All right, so I'll, I'll clean up goal number one and two into one goal.
Perfect.
Goal number, current goal number three soon to be goal number two.
Yep.
Any issue on that?
My, my understanding is that the CPC is in the process of trying to understand what happened, and where we stand and where we can go.
Well, I think that they've done what they can do.
And they were met with a fair amount of information that either hasn't been completed yet, you know, where they're still waiting for information to come in. And adding more people to this, I'm not sure is going to get us there anywhere as any faster.
Have any members of this board besides myself been part of the executive session between the Affordable Housing Trust and the Select Board?
I think Becky and Allison.
There was, there was a one meeting early on, that first summer after we were elected.
Okay. I think it would behoove everybody to have this meeting to bring the other board members up to speed on what occurred in previous executive sessions, as well as what some of the bones of contention are that the Affordable Housing Trust and, and the Select Board concerns had.
I've read them, and you all have suggested a long time ago, before I was even...
But so...
In some sense, we're, we're, we're saying, we're doing an investigation here.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's appropriate.
And I'm not sure that's, I mean, maybe that is the message you want, and given the various parts of the town that are involved in this in different ways, you know, that may not be something that's best done inside. Just point that out.
I'm not, I'm not following what you just said.
Well, if we want an investigation and you want somebody to come back in and say...
Here's what happened.
This is what happened, and this is, this shouldn't have happened, and this other thing should have happened, and so forth, that's an investigation.
So there are pieces...
I don't know if that's what we're saying here, we're investigating.
There are pieces that have happened, I think, speaking, because I am on the Affordable Housing Trust. The members of the Affordable Housing Trust know less than we do. Everyone is, I think, trying to be careful not to speak out of turn, not to say things publicly that shouldn't be said. And I think that we have to take the lead on gathering people together with town council to understand, so that we are all on the same page about where are we and what can we do.
If we were to work with town council, though, might I suggest that we use special counsel?
Yes, I think that we, didn't we decide that?
Well, we, we mentioned it. I, that was a recommendation I made last week. The board took no position.
I mean, it would seem to me, just from the, the partial amount that I know, that there would be a huge amount of time that Brooks and Durensis would need to spend to get up to speed on this. So sticking with, and it would be David Dineski, right?
Correct.
Because he was the one who handled it, I think makes more sense. But it's been a couple of years. There's been changes on all these boards. Bringing in people, and certainly the Affordable Housing Trust and this board can meet together in executive session. I am less clear about the CPC, whether they can be part of that or not.
With their, their money.
You, you can absolutely invite CPC to executive session on this, absolutely.
So then, maybe we should do that.
What, what's the outcome here? What, what are we, I mean, a final accounting is accounting. It'll come when all suits are sorted out and everything.
Not necessary.
So what is it we're, we're trying to do here?
Well, if, if I may, Allison?
Yep.
I think what I'm hearing for, instead of filing accounting, status of project. I think that's what Becky is, is talking about. So we change, if I may, we change to status of project. And then the Select Board in conjunction with the Affordable Housing Trust should review the status of the project. Forget about the, the thing, status of project. And then an executive session with town council, or special town council, should be scheduled in early spring to discuss what has been reviewed thus far relative to the project, period.
I think it could happen sooner than early spring. I, I don't know that there's any reason.
Well, I just, I pick a date, yeah.
By, I mean, if we could get, make this happen in, you know, February, that'd be fine.
So I have, I have no problem with what Mark was just outlining. I think in general, I'm very much with John Geiger in that I'm not really sure what we're thinking we're going to review or make happen. This was pretty clear to me as far back as the town meeting where we approved this, that this was an investment, and an investment is always inherently brings with it some risk. It didn't turn out as we had all hoped. To me, that's kind of the end of this. So I'm not really sure what we're going to do. I have no problem having an executive session and understanding the process. Maybe there's information, as Josh is kind of alluding to, that will come out in that point that will change my mind, but as of right now, I don't personally really see this going anywhere, so.
I know what the status is, and, and all of us know what the status is right now. It's unfinished, installed.
Yep.
Okay, that's the status right now. We don't need to study that. It's, it's evident.
Right, there's much more to it than that.
I don't want to see us go back in history and point fingers and so forth. There's opportunity when we finally get it closed to go back and say, what did we learn from this? Okay, but we don't, what we need to do is figure out, how do we get this to conclusion?
I think that's the point of having this meeting.
That's part of it, for sure.
So if it's developing a strategy to get this closed, this project closed, from a financial perspective. The decisions made around whether anybody's going to go to court, or isn't going to go to court, or is going to settle, or any of that kind of stuff. That's, we've got to bring the decisions together around.
But for the purposes of those who live in this development, to get this closed out is, in my opinion, very important for us as a Select Board.
Yeah, I agree.
To help work on that. But again, there are, without divulging executive session and privileged information, there's stuff that should still be discussed, because I'm not just willing to walk away and say, oh, we made a bad investment. Because while we may have, there's mitigating circumstances around that, and there may be some relief available to that.
So the, the goal will be develop strategy to complete the project?
Well, I'm not sure.
Well, I, I like that.
To close the project.
To close the project, okay.
I don't know how it gets completed.
So to close the project, and then...
That the developer didn't do.
Right.
And they don't want us to get perceived that way, because we don't have the money.
It's not our land. It's not our project.
So ultimately, the benchmark, I think, would be to, to have that executive session...
With town council.
And discuss.
Should be scheduled in, in...
Should be with council.
Yep. Executive session with town council should be...
Go to special counsel.
Special counsel.
Should just, not town, we should say.
Special.
Special counsel.
Well, then I need the board to vote to appoint special counsel. Or otherwise, I can't reach out to, uh...
I move that the board appoint.
I, I need that.
But, look, it doesn't mean we have to spend any money on it. We can appoint them, right?
I didn't mean to jump the gun. I apologize.
Mark, in conjunction with our reviewing the goals, can you perhaps speak to them and get some sort of proposal or something, so that we can authorize special counsel with an amount not to exceed blah, 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 or something? A little more concrete.
But I think we need to get the Community Preservation Committee input.
Absolutely.
Oh, I agree.
Well, we need to include them in that meeting.
Well, it's really theirs.
Well, they're the ones who know the least, so they're the ones who most should come to the meeting.
Well, that's a judge, that's a judgment that I'm... I don't know who knows what right now.
Well, they've asked for information, and they have expressed some frustration at not getting information. And the reason they're not getting information is because the Affordable Housing Trust and our board have been given legal advice about what to say and what not to say.
Let's, let's step back. Who is responsible here? The CPC approved a project and, and issued the funding.
I think that this is all part of what we'll need to figure out with town, with special counsel's advice and understanding.
Where did their obligation end?
Right.
When they issued the money to the project?
Correct.
Now who was overseeing the project on part, on behalf of the town?
The Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, so it's, it's their baby, so to speak, right?
That's correct. And the Affordable Housing Trust doesn't have the authority to retain legal counsel without express approval of the board, this board.
Okay, do we have a request from that committee to do just that? Because if we're going to go out for counsel, we've got to find the money to pay counsel. Right?
And I think we need to understand what we're potentially authorizing, et cetera.
Why don't we just have a preliminary meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust? Discuss what's going on relative to this project as it pertains to executive session, what some of the issues are. Then come back and based on that, make a determination whether we need to get legal counsel, and then have a follow-up meeting collectively with the CPC.
If, if necessary.
If necessary.
Well, so, you know, it was reported in the newspaper, the CPC had sent a letter asking for information. Affordable Housing Trust went before the CPC. A PowerPoint presentation was prepared. Perhaps rather than sort of duplicating all of that all over again, just because we weren't there, we could ask to have that PowerPoint presentation sent, included, sent to us, distributed to us. It was public. It's already a public document, so that we can bring ourselves up to speed. Basically, this is a distillation of what the Affordable Housing Trust was able to say to the CPC. And if we bring them in here in an open session, we're not going to get any more information than that.
So I think we need to have an executive session to discuss all of this.
Mm-hmm. Because it is, it is pertaining to litigation.
Absolutely. I don't think a PowerPoint handout is going to be beneficial without conversation. I, I think we need to all get together in one room.
So...
Is the question whether we should have town council at that meeting, or whether we should have that meeting first and then have an...
I think we can have that meeting first. I, I don't think we even know what we would ask council or anything else. We may need to have substantively the same meeting a second time with special counsel present. But we have to make some attempts to understand where we're at and what we're doing before we start asking council questions.
I think Fran Stanley can fill in a lot of the blanks.
Oh, yeah?
Coupled with David Wilder, Sheila Julian, and myself, and, um, as well as, um, you might, you weren't on at the time most of this went on, actually, virtually all of it.
Right.
And, um, your fifth member.
Stuart.
Stuart?
Well, and now Colleen.
Colleen F. is on there as well. She's familiar with it. Stuart's familiar with it, and I think it would be very beneficial for us to have that meeting. Just to fill everybody in and then make a decision whether or not we want to go anywhere.
So we, we all agree we want to have a meeting. We can stop talking about having a meeting.
Okay, so here, just, I think you should take this off your goals. It doesn't need to be a goal. It's an agenda. I will schedule that meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust and the Select Board in executive session. We can schedule that. I'll work with Allison as chair to schedule that meeting, and then at that meeting, we'll determine next steps. So I'm going to take this off the goals.
Yep.
Well, I, I think a goal of this...
No, I wouldn't.
A goal of this get-together, which is a, a, a smaller slice here, is getting roles clarified. Who's responsible for what?
That's what we'll do at that meeting, right?
I, well, I think that's step number one.
Okay.
Who's leading, who's supporting, who's following?
Allison, I'll work with you.
Yes, please.
Because from what I read in the paper, the CPC was asking for questions, and the housing commission, Fran was quoted as saying, well, you, you can't have that because town council said, no, don't, you know, and... So it seems like CPC was doing an investigation. And I'm not sure why or where the authority for them to do an investigation comes from.
So, so we will have a meeting...
As long as that money was used on that project...
We will have a meeting to discuss all of this. I don't think the Herald is probably our best source of information for pending litigation.
Okay, so then the final goal, review of the town's participation, so that's standing. So, we have two goals. We, we're combining goals one and two into one goal, which is to, um, once the housing production plan has been approved, talk to the planning board about potential changes in zoning, determine the best use of the half a million dollars in the bucket. And then goal number two is review of the town's participation in the CPA. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay. That's it?
Can we, Mark, could I request, for, for health reasons, that we kind of take things out of order?
Yes.
And hold the discussion of separate goals till the end, so that if I need to, to leave, I'm not missing all the rest of these pieces?
Absolutely. So if I go back to my town manager's report, the next thing, uh, on the thing is our licenses to be approved. I like to read those into the record for the board's approval. Broughton House of Pizza, Theo Stefanakis manager, located at 129 Main Street, for a CBL and entertainment license. Hours of operation daily, 11 to 9. Santi's Restaurant and Dairy Bar doing business is Johnson's Restaurant and Dairy Bar, Richard Santiano manager, located at 164 Boston Road, for a CBL and a carry-in license. Hours of operation, summer, daily, 6 to 9, winter, 6 to 8. Gilson Family Herb Enterprises doing business is the Herb Lysian, David Gilson manager, located at 368 Main Street, for a CBL and carry-in license. Hours of operation daily, 10:30 to 11. Bruno Ferrara doing business is Bruno's Pizzeria, Bruno Ferrara manager, located at 195 Main Street, for a CBL. Hours of operation daily, 9:30 to 8:30. Salt Light Cafe, Josiah and Linda Coleman manager, located at 159 Main Street, for a CBL and entertainment license. Did we get them on the carrier? They didn't answer that question. Hours of operation, I should have asked that before, I'm sorry. Hours of operation, I should've asked you that before, I'm sorry. Uh, Monday through Friday, six to four, Saturday, seven to four. Uh, Dolce Armor Suites, uh, to love, Raffiella Gutman manager, located at four seventy-nine Main Street Suite A for a CBL. That's a new business, by the way.
Where is that?
Uh, it's in the, um, Mil, Mil Run.
Mil Run.
Mil Run.
Mil Run Plaza.
Yep. Hours of operation Wednesday to Saturday, nine to four, Sunday, eight thirty to two. And then the NESSP Sci Canteen, Nelkan, uh, Mishra manager, located at ninety-nine Trinity Ray, for a co, commendable license, hours of operation daily eight to eight thirty. I'd ask the board to approve those licenses as presented.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
I believe so.
And I believe, Dawn, that is all of our licenses. So you have now officially approved all the licenses. Uh, finally, uh, as stated in my report last week, I wanted to, go ahead.
Didn't we used to issue a class two license to the, uh, repair shop on, uh, Pleasant Street, Elm Street, Dick Powell's old place? They used to have like three to five used cars.
Yeah, but I think they, they didn't renew.
Because it just rings a bell in my head.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, then I don't think that he does that.
Okay. They don't wanna do it anymore.
Thanks, sorry to bother.
Nope, good cry, I'm glad you asked. Okay, so as, as far as the budget goes, um, I don't even know where to start and how to talk about this. I've been working very closely with the finance committee chair, I, I stipulate that. Um, so I've had conversations with the school committee, school superintendent, rather. I've spoken to the school committee chair, and I know that the school committee is meeting Wednesday night to finalize their guidance and, and where they're moving forward with the budget for next year. I wanna stress, as I did last week, the communication and the cooperation with the school superintendent, the business manager's been outstanding. I had a really good meeting, uh, last Wednesday, after our meeting, with, um, the school superintendent and the, and the business manager. There are some issues that have come up since the summer, which could affect the budget. So I was carrying one number in all of my projections and all of the things that I was doing, and that number may not be the number because of unforeseen things that happened since the summer. No fault of the school department. So now the school committee needs to reevaluate what they're doing in terms of the budget numbers. They may come back with what we were all talking about, but they may not. So that could affect my balanced budget. The guidance that this board gave me, and the finance committee gave me, was to present a level service budget, and then a balanced budget with the town and the schools splitting the difference. If it's what we talked about in the summer, I'm ready to finalize the budget. And I have the numbers ready to go, and I'm gonna bring them to the board. If it's not that number, that changes everything, and I'm back to the drawing board, and I have two weeks to try to figure out what I'm gonna present, because I have to give you a budget by December thirty-first. I can't ask for an extension, there is no provision for an extension. So you may get the budget at December thirty-first, at eleven fifty-nine, uh, PM. So I guess the, the purpose of my update right now is, I'm toying with a few ideas that may wanna present a third budget to the board. Level service budget, balanced budget, budget requiring an override. I don't know if I wanna do that, but.
What was the third thing you said?
Budget requiring an override.
Okay.
Um, I'm toying with that idea, there's nothing prohibiting me from doing that, I'd still be within your guidance, which is balanced budget, level service budget. I may give you a third budget, and I guess I wanna feel you out tonight, if that's a non-starter, or is that something I can, I, the board would at least look at. But I'd welcome your input into this, this as well, so that's where I am, and I, I'm looking for feedback from the board. I'm, 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 I'm telling you right now, this is the highest budget I've had to deal with since I've been here.
So I would say, Mark, that I completely trust your judgment and experience to present whatever budgets make sense. Um, personally, it would be a really, really hard sell to even talk about an override, but, I, you know, I'm not.
I got you.
Up to my eyeballs in it the way you are, so if you feel like that's a, a third thing we need to see, that's a third thing we should see.
It, it seems to me it's like an alternative that probably should be considered.
Yeah.
Cause these are really three options, that would really be three options.
Yeah. I mean, I would, to me, I would caution you, I'm not sure that I would put a lot of detail into that one.
No.
Until there's some indication that, yes, there's some appetite for something of that magnitude kind of thing, but if that's where you're at, that's something we need to see.
Legally, I have to give you that balanced budget, you're gonna get it.
Yep.
It just might be very, very painful.
Right.
And you may wanna look at other options. I'm, I'm looking at you, Josh, I'm wondering what your take is, you.
I'm trying not to say what I'm gonna say, but you know I'm gonna say it anyway.
I want you to say it.
Go ahead and give us the override budget, but I wanna see an override budget that, if, actually, I'm not going to support an override budget unless the override budget takes into account the next five years.
Okay. Um. Well, I have to give you a five-year, the budget.
I know you have to give us a five-year lookout, and we talked that we may need one point seven to two million dollars, many times. And if you ask for an override, and this board was to say, okay, and the FinCon was to say, let's go ahead with the override budget. And then next year, you come back for another override, and the following year, you come back for another override. It's not gonna work, especially when you're looking at a Florence Road school debt exclusion vote on top of it. So be careful what you ask.
Oh, I agree, I agree, I'm, I'm telling you, this is, there's a lot going on right now.
I get it.
Okay, all right, Bud, is there anything you wanna add?
Yes. I, I think you need to put together the override budget only in the, in the sense that I think, I personally believe still that we're gonna get there, as far as a break-even budget with some stuff we still need to talk about. But I think we're gonna get there. Depending how bad the school, if they do, and I, I really don't think the school, although they are tenant, it's up to them, I think the school number, unless it goes crazy off the charts, and a few things we wanna add that we can't. Then we probably should have an override budget to say, this is what we can't do, or this is what something's, like, the school's gonna have to do. That probably is good to have. I don't think, I don't personally believe that that's gonna be required unless we decide as a town, we wanna do some extra stuff. Cause again, that's level funded, but, but just says we do no extra stuff. So I, I don't think, I think we should put it together.
Okay.
But I don't think that's gonna be the main focus, cause I think we're gonna get there. But it's good to know we can't put into the level funded budget, I think that's important for people to know.
Okay. All right, that's, that's what I wanted to hear, that's what I wanted to hear from the board tonight, so that's exactly what I'll do. Uh, the other thing, I just wanna make sure everybody understands, we do not put budget books together anymore, everything's gonna be on a thumb drive, and we're gonna hand out, unless there's special dispensation. Bud always asks for a hard copy, but. I understand, Bud. Uh, but I'm gonna give everybody a thumb drive with the budget, and that's what we're gonna do.
I wanna PDF.
That's, that's, that's what it's gonna be.
Yeah, just, please make sure that on the thumb drive, that I can print what's there.
Yep.
On eight and a half by eleven.
Yes, it'll be designed that way.
Not, here's a screen, you'd need forty-foot screen.
No, that's, no, no, no.
To look at this spreadsheet.
It'll be what, it, it's, it's what we put on the website.
Well, I've seen some things on the website that were hard to see on, on the edges.
I know. We'll get it, we'll get it to you. All right, um, so that's, that's it. Um, the other issue, Allison, to go, to go back to is, um, whether or not we wanna do separate goals for the town management, we can put that on a future agenda if you're not up to it tonight.
I, I'm not up to it, but I, if the board wants to proceed without me, I'm, I, I don't have an issue with that, so.
Well, Heather, I'd like to have some discussion about it, but I really think it should be the whole board, and I think we can wait.
Okay.
That's fine.
Absolutely, I mean, it's something that would probably cut in beginning on July first.
January first.
No, we're talking about.
January first.
We're gonna have the same goal that we did for the next six months.
Goals for the next six months.
That's what the.
Whether or not you wanna have separate goals for the town manager.
Well, okay, there's two issues, one is whether or not the pro, the town manager is given goals or not, that's one issue.
Right.
The second one is, if that's true, then are there any we wanna put in for this six-month period?
Right.
But we got, there are two separate.
Yes.
Well, and, and.
Pieces there, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I'll reschedule that. I'll reschedule that.
Oh.
Really quickly on the ongoing issues list, um, there is no update on the senior center, we're still working on that. I updated you last week on Prescott, there's no change on that. Uh, water department, no update on that?
We had a meeting to discuss it.
Oh, we did, no, I talked, I updated the board last week on that.
I don't think so, I think your meeting was held after our meeting.
It was.
Oh, it was? Oh!
So we had a meeting with the Friends of Prescott?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm, I'm losing my mind, yes. We had a meeting of the Prescott Oversight Committee with the Friends of Prescott last week after we met. And you know what I think of this, I think I talked to individuals, and then it made, yeah, it made it sound like I talked to the whole board, so I apologize.
Yeah.
So Bud, Josh, and I got together with them. They presented their, their books to us, and it, it came down, and, and please, Josh, and, and Bud, correct anything I say here. The Friends of Prescott will have no problem meeting the third year of that lease and paying the town the twenty thousand dollars. No question about it, they showed us their books, they have the money, the money's in the bank, they're ready to complete the current lease. The problem is future leases and extending the current lease with them. If we do not get the sprinkler system installed into that building, which will allow them to open up programming for children in the building without adults. Because right now, the only way they can have program with children in the building is if they're accompanied by an adult.
If children's below a certain age.
Correct. If we can't.
The age is eighteen.
Sixty?
Yeah.
Whatever the ages.
I don't remember what the ages is.
Whatever the ages.
Six and six.
But, but the, but the point is, is without having that ability, it will severely hamper their money, and it's questionable whether or not they can continue and renew the lease with the town. So our primary focus is to get that bid out next spring for the sprinkler system, so that we can go to town meeting, they have a CPA application before the CPC, for the additional money that may be needed. There's two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars sitting in the account to pay for the sprinkler system. Anything above two hundred and twenty-three will require an additional, uh. Appropriation from the Community Preservation Committee. So that's the whole, am, am I missing anything? That's where we are.
That also, if they do not get the sprinkler system, that part of their projected revenues includes renting additional space, and, and that, did you touch on that?
No.
So they won't be able to meet their rental projection goals, uh, as well as they are not able to retain long-term tenants unless they get that sprinkler system.
Correct. The sprinkler system is the key, in my opinion, from talking to them, for their continuation. So we are going to redouble our efforts to get somebody to bid on that sprinkler system in the spring, we will do everything we can to get it done, um, and then we'll see what happens. The bids will, will, will coordinate it so that the bids come in due around town meeting time, because we're only allowed to hold the bids for thirty days. So I'll need a town meeting article from the CPC that will allow us. So I'm not sure where the CPC is in with their application process, I think final application's a draft.
Draft.
And I know that, yeah, in January, the Friends are doing their, their job on that. And I apologize for my confusion, I thought I already talked to you. Go ahead, Allison.
Um, so I just wanna register again, like, a broken record, my ongoing consternation about a product, you know, piecemeal approach to a project that is ultimately, hasn't been flushed out, or costs identified, or anything else, I have a problem with this, but.
Okay. Um, no update, I think I forwarded you an email, uh, on the water department issue from DEP that we received last week?
Yes, um, so we had asked to have a meeting, do we, are, are we any clearer on whether we can have that meeting in the executive session?
Actually, we've gotta get the consent order, and I think I forwarded you an email.
I thought we got the consent.
No.
No, we didn't get a consent order, we got.
Set their rates.
We got results.
Results.
Yes.
Yeah, we got results of P-FAS.
Correct.
We already have the manganese.
Yeah, but it's how we're going to address the, the manganese based on the consent order. That's what Becky's asking.
Quad share, right?
Yep. So I'm still waiting to receive that, so no update on that?
However, there was a lot of publicity last week about P-FAS, because the state was dealing with it somehow or other, and the state set some standards.
Yes.
So I had meant to get to you at that point, and I forgot, just as well, cause we were pretty busy tonight, but it, I think it'd be useful at our next meeting, it'd be helpful, if, as, as I understood what I was hearing. The testing that we have done came in below what the state, the standards that the state passed.
Correct.
So I think it'd just be good public relations to invite them to come to our meeting and make a public announcement to the effect that, good news, we've done our testing, and we fall below the standards that the state has set, so there is no issue with P-FAS here in Broughton, if they can say that.
Well, now, there's no issue.
Right.
I haven't seen the state number yet.
It was publicized last.
The federal number is like point seven zero, but.
The state went much lower, they passed it in the legislature last week at, uh.
Through both pieces, I hadn't seen anything.
I think, I believe they did, but let me double check.
Okay.
I thought it passed, but maybe it was only one house, maybe I, sorry, it was like, I think.
Cause until we know for sure what that number is and when it becomes effective.
Yeah.
What Tom had told me.
That's also I didn't.
Well, well, what Tom had told me was that what he's hearing that the state is going to set is a level.
Right.
We are below that.
Right, and then the state did something last week.
Okay. All right, I'll find out, let me find out.
Set the level. That's what I heard.
Okay. All right.
How far below the level are we?
We, I don't think we were huge, too far.
Percentage was.
I don't know.
I don't, I don't think it was huge.
Well, it's broken out by well.
So that gets back to, we need to meet with the water department and finish our discussion, which we keep talking about every week.
Okay. Well, the P-FAS, we can talk about the P-FAS now.
We cannot do that until we know whether there's a consent order.
The other, the other concern that I have is, right now, um, their idea is, they're gonna tear up Route Forty, bring pipes down, and build a fif, a five million dollar, or whatever, event, uh, se, uh, uh, structure at Vatickup.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I look at the documentation that they've given us, right? They did consider putting the, um, manganese filtering at the wells, okay? But all they gave us was a couple of two hundred thousand dollar items, and then a five million dollar item for that, whatever has to be built out there. I look at what we've done at the senior center, I look at what, or, or the Broughton Center, I look at what we've done for five grand at the highway garage, right? Five million dollars, okay? Rand's my nudge. The, the five million dollars, right? And I'm going, tell me, I wanna know what's in that five million dollar number. You're gonna show me stuff down to a two hundred thousand dollar level on a couple of three-line items, and then throw in five million dollars, what is this game?
Right, and that's part of what, until we have a consent order.
And I'm, I'm really wondering if, 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 see, they have a processing plant out there now, and I'm really wondering if they want a new one. And the way to do that is to, to tear up Route Forty and put these two things together. Because when I asked a question about if we got two new wells, say the ones that are out by Tom Delaney's property, I don't know what they call them, no.
Okideb.
Um, the Dinglebell Wells, or something, you know? So anyway, they said, oh, we'd have to put a facility at that site. Huh? So why are we doing it?
Right.
I want, I can't answer people's questions who've come to me and said, why are we doing it? Why can't we build it out there?
So we cannot, until, if there is a consent order, that is considered litigious, and we have that conversation in executive session. Without a consent order, which we have requested a copy of from DEP several times, all conversation needs to be an open session. If we have a conversation in open session that later should have, we determined should have happened in executive session due to litigation reasons, we've overstepped and shared information that we wouldn't want to in a litigation situation, so we're.
Has our, has our town council declared that this all has to be in executive session?
He's waiting for the consent order.
He needs to see the consent order.
That's where we're stuck on, and that's why I forwarded you the email from DEP.
But meanwhile, we're putting budgets together, we're coming up with ways to move some of the cost over to the town.
And that was our request last week, was that the water commissioners not move forward in doing, so.
Well, they didn't do that.
I understand that, but that's not, we, we made the request, so we can.
So what's the game? What's the game we're playing here?
I don't know the name of it, I don't know the rules.
You mean they, they, I mean, they went ahead and changed their rates?
They went ahead and implemented a tw, a ten dollar.
But they implemented the, the fee, the pay for this?
I recommended to the water commissions that they go ahead with the rate increase, the ten percent that helps balance their budget, which they did. the ten percent that helps balance their budget, which they did. I asked them to hold off on any capital charge until such time as we know what we're going to do. They chose to implement a ten-dollar capital charge effective January first and a twenty-dollar capital charge effective April first. They are the water commissioners, totally within their right to do what they did. We just simply made a recommendation. It's their decision, and they made their decision. So they duly posted public hearings, they did everything by the book.
I mean, if the board feels like it's a risk worth taking to have conversations now in open session, we can move forward with that. But we have no right currently to have any of the conversation in executive session.
That is correct.
And where's the oversight from rate papers?
They had a public hearing.
Yes, they had an advertised public hearing, nobody attended.
So we should bring it to...
Well, Judy, I'm sorry, let me correct that. Judy was there.
Okay. Maybe we should have a meeting in open session just to discuss the fee, the cost sharing of their project.
I don't think... I mean, to me, I feel like the risk, if we do end up in a litigation situation, the risk of having had virtually any conversation in open session is pretty darn big.
Too high.
So who's... What's the possible litigation that we would...
The consent order from DEP, which we understand is pending, but which DEP has not yet given us a copy of.
And we might object to it?
We might. That's an issue, Becky.
Basically, I saw a message come back to Mark or somebody that basically said, you'll get it when we're ready to give it.
Absolutely.
That's pretty much what it said. From DEP. That's not the water commissioners.
Understood, no. Absolutely.
But we got to slow down.
But, yeah, it's something...
I mean, we should be adding all this time to whatever deadline they're giving us.
Unfortunately, it's not in our purview. It's the water commissioners and they've...
They should be doing that.
They have been asked to slow down, and they have not complied with that request, so...
So we're not, you know...
We don't know. I don't think ultimately...
A lot of information is being withheld from us.
Absolutely.
I floated an idea about a phased rate increase to them.
I don't think that we, as a board, have any jurisdiction over their choices or behaviors.
We do when they come ask for money.
Absolutely. But at this point in time, we don't have any...
And they do when they want us to sign off on a, you know, five-million-dollar project.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You have to sign the bonds, that's correct.
Oh, yeah. I don't have to sign the bond.
You do not.
I choose to sign the bond.
That is your call.
And if you don't want to play with me, I might just not sign the bond.
Absolutely.
Is that a town meeting vote that would be required?
Town meeting authorizes the debt. Only the select who can sign the bonds that defer the debt. All town meeting does is authorize it. You have to sign the bonds.
Absolutely. There's... You know, John, to your ultimate concern, to me, there is tremendous risk that the water commissioners are taking in not slowing the process down, A, and in not working with what's equivalently at this point a peer board.
And not sharing information so others can understand.
They have chosen it over and over again to proceed the way they are.
Once we get that consent order, we will get together with the water commissioners ASAP.
We will, but I think at that point, Mark, it's likely that they have progressed and made decisions that we will potentially not be able to weigh in on.
Yeah. I wish they...
Which is extremely concerning.
Well, I wish they had held off on that capital charge.
No, I know.
But the ten percent fee was needed to balance their budget, so I hope that's clear.
Well, that's because they had a big overspend last year on something.
About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we spent on the plan to go to DEP on the manganese issue.
Well, that money was taken out of their reserves.
And their reserves are dangerously low, thus we need to build it back up. So, all right. Lot of fun. MS four permit, I have no update. Polystyrene containers, I sent an email out to you today. The Board of Health is all over that, like a whole bone and a ham sandwich. They will have a proposal coming back.
Does that come in a polystyrene container?
Yes. Green Communities, we're still waiting to hear from the state. Florence Roach Elementary School feasibility study, I have no new update on that. Library roof repair, I think if you drove by Main Street today, you saw the scaffold that come down.
No, it isn't all down.
It's coming down, yes, it's coming down.
I saw people in yellow coats up on the roof still, so...
So, okay. Well, they're working on certain sections, but a lot of it is done.
Hopefully, they can put something over it so we don't leak this time when the snow comes tomorrow.
I hope you might. But that project's going well. Highway Garage renovations, I have no update on that. That's continuing to progress nicely as well.
Except the base pavement was put in.
Yeah, I mentioned that last week.
Yeah, okay.
I mentioned that last week. That's all I have for my updates.
All right. Mark, just on the Green Communities stuff, could you make sure that the application and whatever work was done on creating an inventory and assessing town property gets shared with the Capital Planning Committee so they don't start all over again creating an inventory?
Very good. Does anyone have liaison reports to share? All right, then we have one set of minutes from December ninth to...
One change.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't give it to you, Dawn, I just caught it. Page ten of sixteen of our packet, page three or four of the minutes where it says, Mr. Robinson said... Mr. Robertson said near the end, it should say that he would support, not she. You're welcome. You see that, Dawn?
Yep.
Yeah, you've got to either take that out or make it an MS period.
So I would entertain a motion to approve as amended. So... All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.